Well, good evening, everybody. And welcome to tonight's City Council Special Meeting for Tuesday, June 10. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And if the clerk could please call the roll.
Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
President.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Rosina Farrell.
Here.
Councilmember Farrell, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilmember Trine, if you could just lead us with, or if you could give us the land acknowledgement, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the coastal Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved and?
Second.
Thank you. All those who favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Great, the motion carries, the agenda is approved. And now we will go first to presentations. And then we will go directly into public comment. So, the presentation first. I don't think there is actually anything to show, right? Per se? Yeah, okay. So, roughly about two weeks ago, the city sent out a letter to Inglewood residents that we deeply regret. The unintended consequences of our actions sent a shockwave of dismay, concern, and frankly, fear into the hearts of our neighbors. We fell flat on our face with a tone deaf and truly unhelpful communication, creating unnecessary turmoil and pain. Here again, we are profoundly sorry, and we apologize for the hurt that we caused. Hopefully, the residents of Inglewood have received a new letter. And if not, you can certainly find it on the website, under Inglewood, because it's posted there as well. The one posted on the website and the one enclosed into, I don't, it's actually part of today's actually agenda packet. I hope that you can see that we are sincerely trying to repair the damage we caused. And the letter covers that we voted on June 3 to continue serving the streets that have been traditionally maintained by the city. And as we are working as rapidly as we can for a permanent solution and a return to the status quo, several of us met with folks in the neighborhood. We met with folks at Coffee with Council on Saturday. We went into the neighborhood and spent a few hours talking to different folks and taking a look at homes and trying to understand just all the layout of the land and just to see what people were confronting. So, we are working to update the website with that FAQ, which I understand is being worked on as we speak, and may be up soon?
If it's not up already, it should be up very shortly.
And that actually should be a very helpful document. And again, if it's not, you need to just tell us and we'll fix it. We are continuing to do the research on an amendable and workable and viable and legal solution, and we are very encouraged and believe that we may be able to give you more information on Thursday at 6:30 in the chambers here. You know, I met with Blackwell Elementary students today, and they asked me, what is the hardest part of your job? And I said, honestly, it's when you've made a mistake and you know you need to take responsibility for it, and then to figure out how you're going to fix it. So that could be hard, but it's also the right thing to do. And so that's what we are doing. We are holding ourselves as councilmembers 100% accountable. We owe the fix to you, and we are working as hard as we can on it. The other thing they asked is, how old am I? I told them 110, and they seemed to buy it, which I felt was disturbing. But, like, tonight, you know, when you get public comment, you know, please do your three minutes. And, you know, tell us what you need to tell us. That is absolutely fine. Keep in mind, we can't actually respond to you in real time, so I can't answer your question if you ask it. But we are taking notes, we are documenting it, and we will add it to the FAQ. For some reason, it's not in the FAQ right now. Something else the Blackwell kids taught me was the symbol for same. So as you have different thoughts that are the same thoughts as other people that have just shared them, for example, you know, feel free to use this. It could be sometimes more helpful for people that have sensory issues to not have a lot of loud clapping. But I'm not discouraging that at all. So hopefully, people have had an opportunity to sign up. Because if that's the case, then we'll start public comment. And we will start in the room, and then we will go to those on Zoom. While we're waiting for folks to sign up, did any other council members want to make some comments? This is an opportunity to do so.
I wanted to express my appreciation for those that came to Coffee with Council. And I appreciated going to the Inglewood neighborhood and meeting with the residents. I think it's really important, or I guess my takeaway, having met the residents, is it's such a, it's very helpful, and it's a very different dynamic. Like, when we're sitting here and you're sitting there versus you're up there giving public comment, or we're getting emails. It was just really helpful for me to walk the neighborhoods and talk to everybody that I met. And so I'm really hopeful that we can find a solution that is amendable to our residents and, you know, work within, you know, the legal aspects of the situation. But I really appreciated meeting many of you. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the residents, especially those I met on Sunday. One of the takeaways I had from that meeting, apart from talking about the letter debacle, as I'm calling it, it also brought home to me, in a very clear way, how many of our residents are still dealing with bomb cyclone aftermath. And I have to say, I apologize for not being keenly aware of that, even though I've had my own personal experiences with various leaks and all that kind of thing that homes experience, and how long that takes, and the expense of it, and the worry of it. So walking through the neighborhood and still seeing tarps on roofs, it reminded me that then receiving this letter was just probably the cherry on top. And so, I'm not sure how, but I would really, I'm interested to hear how many of our residents are still dealing with bomb cyclone situations on their private property, just by way of having some feedback and some empathy and some kind of level setting of this is what our residents are going through on a daily basis, this is what they're dealing with. And so I thank those of you who were there and kind of shared with me your stories. That was our privilege to hear your story, so thank you for that. And I hope this makes me a better listener going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else, council? If not, then I'll also mention another, one other quick thing, sorry. Just that I did do an interview with the Seattle Times on Friday. So this will show up in the Times probably Wednesday, maybe Thursday? I know that there were interviews done in the Inglewood neighborhood as well. But that won't be the final story, because they're prepared to do a follow-up story to talk about what solution we come to the table with. So I'm expecting kind of a bookend type of a thing happening. But I just wanted you to know about us, that nobody was surprised. And so, Tracy Ziera, first, please.
Sorry, someone's calling me right now. I need to get rid of them. They knew, okay. Thank you. My name is Tracy Ziera. Coming up this summer, I will have lived in the Inglewood Platte for 10 years. I was at the City Council meeting on June 3 and sincerely appreciate that council extended the time for public comment. Thank you for listening to everything people had to say. I'm sure some of it was hard to hear. There were a lot of emotions during the public comment, confusion, frustration, anger, despair. But I think people also came because they had hope, hope that you would listen, understand, and want to help. I know that's why I came, and it's why I'm here again today. I'd like to thank you for dropping the June 30 deadline, and would like to affirm that despite this initial step forward, this is still a very real issue and present in a lot of people's minds, and there is still uncertainty and work to do. Council has stated wanting to protect the city and wanting to protect all its residents, and I'd like to offer that agreeing on legal public record that the Inglewood Platte streets are public is protecting the city and all its residents. This is evidenced by your neighbors, city residents from outside the Platte, who are speaking up and advocating on our behalf. This is evidenced by other cities in Washington State that have gone through similar situations and whose public leaders and staff chose to come up with creative solutions instead of blindly pushing through what felt, in this circumstance, like a tunnel vision agenda. If the city of Simamish decides to hold fast that their original intended action is enforceable by law, and let's just say, just for argument's sake, that the city's interpretation of the law is 100% correct, just for argument's sake, I believe the intent of all laws should be to protect people. If the law isn't protecting people, then it is the city's civic and moral duty to change it and make it right, and it is the council's responsibility to hold them accountable. I sincerely appreciate the council apologizing, but I also have to be honest that it is not enough. Removing the June 30 deadline was the first step. Apologizing was the second. There are still more steps, and residents have been told. The council and city are working hard to rectify the situation, which I sincerely hope is true. Trust has been damaged, and for some, that is going to be harder to rebuild than others. But I would like to believe it's possible. Mayor Howe, I appreciate you sharing the council's operating agreement at the last council meeting. The first component in particular really rang true for me, assume good intent. I believe this is a fundamental principle for progress, and I want you to know that I am here with good intentions and that I will assume good intentions of this council. Please do not let me down. Please do not let my neighbors in this community, our city, down. I am looking forward to Thursday's meeting, to hearing new information about what progress has been made, and to receiving definitive answers. Thank you for your time today and for listening to what I had to say.
Thank you. So, Disha Govan?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm Disha Govan. I have been a Simamish resident for close to 10 years now, and I would like to talk about my concerns about the proposal to increase the number of units in the town center. I know we need to plan for growth, but I don't think this kind of rapid density increase is right for us at this time. Let's talk traffic first. Our roads, especially 228th, is already packed during morning and evening hours, and most people drive. And adding 2,000 more units from the already 2,000 planned units is going to make traffic a nightmare. I can give you an example of my own commute. Every Wednesday morning, I take my child to Bellevue College. I drive. Would I prefer that my child takes public transit? Absolutely. It would be convenient, and I get to sleep in. But I still have to drive, because it takes two hours by public transit. That is the reality of our transit today, and I don't think the 2,000 new residents are going to take the bus based on how our transit is currently and considering there are no serious plans or major plans to make any improvements. So we're going to add thousands more cars on our streets, which I don't think they are currently able to handle. Then there are our schools. Classrooms are already crowded, and I heard that they're proposing, let's bust the kids off the plateau. When study after study has shown that kids benefit from later mornings, we are telling them, wake up earlier. We're putting our parents under strain, because they have to get up earlier so that our kids can get a good education, which is why we all live in Simamish, for the school districts. And now we are saying, get up earlier and go to school earlier, which is detrimental to health, especially for teenagers. We've, study after study has told that kids should be getting up earlier, I mean, later. And we are saying, we want to build 2,000 more units so kids get to get up earlier. That's not, that's not reasonable or good for our kids. There's also the environmental concerns, more traffic, more stress on our utilities, on our natural assets, which is what Simamish is known for, our salmon, our lakes. Just the impact of so many more units on those environmental assets, not something that I think any of us want. At the end of the day, it's not just about new buildings, it's about the quality of life, our life, lives of our kids, and of the wildlife that we share our space with. So I respectfully request you to please reconsider this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Paul Stickney.
Good evening, City Council. Paul Stickney. Simamish, now for some counterintuitive and not self-evident information. What is the profound issue to face and remedy within our community that has persisted for 25 years? It's that current housing supplies are not optimized to meet genuine citywide housing imbalance, housing needs, for those living and working in Simamish over their cycle of life, and for legacy-balanced, sustainable housing for generations to come. How do we solve the problem? Will we add 5,000 B and C Chi housing units over and above the 2,100 affordable housing units in our comp plan? Housing type A is affordable housing from 175,000 to 500,000. B is market rate from 500,000 to 1 million. Four, C are market rate condominiums above 15,000, and those are the categories that we're short on. And D is market rate housing above 15,000. Now, here's the big stuff. What would happen if we actually had 7,100 more A, B, and C housing units over 20 years, from 2025 to 2024? They would be the equivalent of 1,700 to 1,800 single-family homes. And why does equivalency matter? Because in the last 25 years in Simamish, our community has had added over 6,000 single-family homes. Generally, for A and B, C, A, B, and C housing units equal one D unit for traffic and student generation. Relative to the economic and demographic and workforce makeup of our community compared to housing supplies today, there are notable surpluses of D housing and significant shortages of A, B, and C. So over 20 years, what can the city recognize? People can stay, and 7,100 authentically needed A, B, and C housing units added. That meets about 70% of the lowest need of Chi needs. And traffic and student effects would be less than 1/3 of those added the last 25 years. So two steps to pivot quickly. Add the B and C housing units to the comp plan. And with that done, reconsider town center alternatives to optimize internal housing imbalance, and to what degree should potential changes be made in the town center based on long-term cycle of life and future generational housing. On the backside, here's some more information. Appreciate the chance to speak.
Thank you. Gillian Wallace.
My name is Gillian Wallace. I live on the Simamish Platte, Inglewood Platte Road, or Inglewood Hill Road in the Simamish Platte. I am here not only to agree with what everything Tracy has said in every sort of way, but in addition, I'm also here to speak about all the market, the real estate market, and how this affects not just our Platte, but all of the Simamish and just surrounding areas. I have had a real estate agent from Windermere who has been a senior agent for over 30 years. And he did, he sent a letter to the Senator Council. And I am just reiterating that he's saying that it's detrimental to not just the people who are putting their houses on the market and taking their houses off the market, or who might want to, I don't know, buy houses in a city hall area. But also, it's going to be affecting all of the property values of what is going to be considered maintained, of what's city maintaining versus what is going to be personal maintained. Then there's also the safety issue, which is going to be another side topic. This, today, a second person has been hit by a car right at the end of my street on Inglewood Hill Road. That's the second person in two weeks that's been hit in the same location. I personally happened to drive by and see the person today who got hit today about 5:00. They were a bike rider. The person who got hit two weeks ago-ish was, he lives nearby, and he was actually working on his fence on Inglewood Hill Road, and he got hit by a car. So, and he had his, you know, minor son who was there watching and helping him. And this is, this is the kind of safety that we're have representing in Inglewood Hill Platte. And, you know, we're told to, oh, why don't you use the crosswalk? Because it's on the other side where you guys had to cross on Sunday to, I mean, that was a beautiful, lovely day. Think about, you know, 9:00 in the morning on a Monday, when people are bleary-eyed and not paying attention, and they're going 45, 50 miles an hour down that road. What about the people who are like swerving around the garbage trucks and all of that stuff? That safety is not existent. And, I mean, we literally have no sidewalk, no crosswalk, no way to get to a crosswalk. There's literally, and there's not even barely a bike lane in some of that area. So, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you guys hearing us, and I appreciate this open dialogue. Thank you for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I noticed Denise, and then it's a beautiful handwriting that looks like Steel, oh, Steel, no, sorry. Yep, got it. You do have really lovely handwriting.
Okay, Denise Steel-Darnell, hi again. Nice to see you. First, I want to compliment Karen for doing such a lovely introduction. And if I could ask, that that could be done every time for any new people who've been here. It was great for you to explain that you're not really allowed to give comment back, because I know that took me a while to get used to that idea, and how pleasant it was that you could actually make comments in the beginning, addressing what you were discussing, when normally we never have that. So I would really hope in the beginning, you can always do such a lovely introduction. It was very helpful, I think, and you can see by the amount of people that are here, the more you help people feel welcome, the more you're going to get more citizens. So on that note, oh, thank you. I love that Inglewood residents were so forefront in getting this done, and I would plead that you consider visiting other neighborhoods, like you did Inglewood. I do feel like there's a gap of knowledge with what you know about our city. And I, for one, live in Simamish Woods and Loria Estates, and I wrote to all of you asking if you could please come to Loria Estates and do a tour of this odd little dirt area where they're trying to build this massive apartment complex, which doesn't make any sense. And I will write again to ask if maybe we can get more of you to come. Sid kindly did come, but it was only one person. So if you could start deciding to have more of these tours around the neighborhoods, I think you'll really appreciate what we're always trying to come tell you. It would be just lovely. My second point, totally different than this, is the town center. All of what we're discussing, you have a lot of residents that need your help already. Adding to the town center 4,000 dwellings doesn't fit in with what we're all talking about. And you're going to be making such a difference badly, that we're all going to pay for it for years to come, so much so that we'll be sitting thinking, how did this ever happen? So I beg of you to not go past the 2,000. I saw recently that we were rated as the sixth top city, I believe, in the country for small town, and the 11th top city in the country by U.S. News and World Report. Hopefully, I got that correct. Why are we trying to change that rating? This is an excellent rating. I truly believe we should, as a city council, be celebrating what we have, instead of trying to become something that we cannot become. Most recently, the most amazing quote I've ever seen, "We are an island with two-way streets." We cannot change living on an island. As much as we talk about how everyone's going to happily jump on a bus, we cannot change the fact we are an island. Let's celebrate our island. Let's become a city council like Fall City is, how their city council is fighting back against developers. And please join all of us in doing what we want, which is to keep Simamish the way it is in its state. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. It's Isabel, and I'm not sure, Veriso?
Maracco.
Thank you.
This will be short. My name is Isabel Maracco, and I've been a Simamish resident for about 10 years. And since moving here, I have been kept, I've kept myself pretty much informed on what's been happening with the town center over the years, the plans regarding the town center, going to council meetings, public hearings, open houses, studying the plans online at length. I'm in agreement with most city residents that Simamish, that the town center is a pretty good idea, but I am not supportive of the scope and the design of the current approved 2,000-unit plan. The bottom line, in my opinion, is that this site is just not conducive to the size and scope of the planned development, with its proximity to 228th Street, our main arterial, actually surrounding the actual main street and having its impact on that. Along with the other negative aspects that have been repeatedly been addressed by residents and neighbors at council meetings for years, such as the increase, the impact on schools, the environmental impact, the community character, I believe that the most severe negative impact on residents will be this choke point and traffic jams primarily on 228th Street, the main and most traveled arterial in the city. It will be irreversible. That's with 2,000 units. And now this council is considering doubling it to 4,000 units with added heights. Thank God they loaded those. This will increase the problems that we have been discussing for years exponentially. This council needs to reject the proposed SEIS, period. And I'm very disappointed, and I'm angry that you're all spending so much money of taxpayer dollars on things that shouldn't even be followed up. Thank you.
Thank you. Shane Probst.
Good evening. My name is Shane Probst, and I'm a resident of the Inglewood Beach Club neighborhood. Rather than come here and rake you over the coals again tonight, I'd like to point out a few things that I don't think anyone else has considered. I attended the council meeting last week, and I've read all the posts on all the Facebook groups, so I think I'm current on the concerns and issues. It is my understanding generally that cities perform impact analysis before they make a significant change like what you proposed for our neighborhood. Perhaps that analysis was done, and we just haven't seen the report yet. But given the shock and surprise from the neighborhood response- shock and surprise from the neighborhood response last week by council members, I think it's safe to assume that analysis was not done. Had it been done, I think the items I'm about to point out, and a few others I wasn't smart enough to think of, would have been on such a report and better prepared the council for the meeting last week. Let's start with streetlights. Are you coming to take them down, or will you just turn them off? I assume you can't use city funds to operate them. What happens then? Do our neighborhoods just go dark? The single most cost-effective deterrent to crime is light. Criminals operate in the dark. Light up an area and crime goes down between 14% to 36% based on my research. This is especially true with crimes of opportunity, vandalism, and smashing grabs. When word hits the streets that an entire Sammamish neighborhood no longer has streetlights, I think we're going to be sweeping up a lot of broken glass. Road signs, we have them now, but I assume you won't replace them when they're damaged. Since you won't remove snow and ice either, when they get knocked, they will get knocked down even more frequently. Who pays for that? What happens when they're all gone? It will be like a neighborhood right after a tornado. All the signs are gone, so nobody is sure which block is which. Speed limits, we will no longer have them either. I'm aware police will come for 911 calls, but high school kids can turn our streets into speedways late at night if they want to. How do we prevent that? Sure, someone could be charged with reckless driving in egregious cases, but they can't be cited for speeding. So there really isn't an incentive to operate cars at a reasonable speed for anyone. Navigation, anyone can request that Google stop navigating through private property. It happens all the time. All it will take is one persistent person reporting over and over that Google is routing traffic across their private property, and suddenly navigation information will cease to exist for many homes. My neighborhood is basically a giant cul-de-sac consisting of multiple streets, but with only one way in. We call the way in the triangle. Report that small section as private road, and directional information for all those homes is gone. There are roughly 22,000 homes in the city of Sammamish. I've heard estimates of between 400 and 600 homes are affected by this action, so I'll use 500 as an estimate. I bet that would have been an impact statement, but maybe I'm being petty. My point is the council is nonpartisan, so in the next election, you can't really count on party affiliation to keep votes in your column. 500 homes is 2.27% of the electorate. If you don't fix this problem satisfactorily, I can guarantee 2.2% of the electorate and their friends and families in Sammamish will happily vote to replace each and every one of you in subsequent elections. Thank you.
Bruce and Jean Dunkberg.
My name's Bruce Dunkberg. I'm a resident of the Inglewood Hill plat. We live 207th and Willow Street. If you go to the original plat map for the Inglewood Hill neighborhood, you'll see that Willow Street is, excuse me, Northeast 8th. So I just want to echo what a lot of our neighbors have said, and forgive me if I do it a little more forcefully. The original letter that we received, and frankly, the subsequent apology letter, at least thank you for apologizing, but that's really an exercise in damage control. There are no new solutions. And if I may, this is a problem that the city has created. No one has ever, in detail, explained the rationale or the statement, and I'll quote, well, even from the apology letter, while reviewing a right-of-way permit in the neighborhood, it came to light that the streets in Inglewood are private. That's bluntly kind of insulting, right? Give us details. We know the Inglewood Hill plat was filed with the county in 1889. There is no record of the non-use statute ever being implemented that the public has seen. There are subsequent laws to that the current version of the non-use statute prohibit, specifically prohibits county roads from being applicable to the non-use statute. And I'd even point you to a current revised code of Washington, Article 3675080, which has been on the books since the 1940s. And it basically requires, or states, that county roads used for the last 10 years, for any 10-year period, remain as county roads. I can cite you a letter from Clickatah County that went to the State Attorney General in 1955, asking specifically that. May the county commissioners, by resolution, withdraw county roads from the county road system and thus relieve the county from the duty and liability of maintenance without the road losing the status of a county road.
Thank you.
And the answer was no. Thank you.
So now we have Michael Steinhaus.
Hi, my name is Michael Steinhaus. I've been a Sammamish resident for almost 11 years. I really appreciate the opportunity that I have here to share my thoughts and opinion. I'd like to start with big thank you and appreciation from, for what I heard from Karen at the beginning of this meeting about owning, owning the decisions, owning the mistakes. It is extremely important. Like, we all may make mistakes, and the, it's much more telling how we, what we deal about them, what we do about them, how we deal with it, because nobody is, nobody is perfect, nobody is guaranteed from not making mistakes. And my, the reason I'm here and I'm speaking here today is the, is my concern, express my concern about the city center plans. Frankly, it's one of those occasions where it's hard to say anything because it just doesn't get in my head. Who could possibly think about, like, the very idea is so crazy to put, like, even 2,000 units, like, not even speaking of 4,000 units. It's like, for any person who've been commuting at least one or two days in a row, I mean, they, yeah, there might be something I don't understand. There might be something I'm missing. But I've been living here for almost 11 years, and like, with all my mind, I can, I cannot stretch my imagination to, to come, to come up with the reason somebody living here would want these 4,000 units in the city center. Really, it's, it's just beyond me. And, and what Karen, Karen's introduction, introductory speech today, it, actually, I wasn't thinking about that, but it gave me that, gave me that thought, that we know that we all make mistakes, and we just recently had this, had this opportunity to learn. But learning experiences is not just like damage control or anything, is that try to think about what could the possible consequences be if, if it was a bigger mistake. I'm afraid if the plan is approved, it is such, the mistake would be so much bigger, with so much more disastrous consequences for the entire city for years to come that we cannot afford making that mistake. Maybe there should be a citywide vote for that plan or not. It deserves that. The mistake would be too expensive.
Thank you. We have just one more person in the room. Heather Murphy-Rains, and I believe I've gone through everybody. And then we'll go to online.
Hello, my name's Heather Murphy-Rains. I am a resident of 20 years in Sammamish from Trossacks. And I am here representing a bipartisan grassroots citizen group called Save Our Sammamish. You might have heard of us. You might have seen our signs, you might have seen our website, savemammish.com. And we even have a petition, so far 1,200 people and counting. We support town center. We are not anti-growth, but we continue to be concerned that the city council is considering a proposal to double the town center's housing density, adding an additional 2,000 new units for a total of 4,000 housing units, and increasing building heights up to 85 feet. Again, this would bring the total to 4,000 units, double the Growth Management Act requirements. Why? Our key concerns, traffic gridlock, increased density could overwhelm 228th, and the other exit routes leading to severe congestion, higher regressive taxes, funding for infrastructure improvements, including roads and proposed town square, could lead to increased taxes. And we've already had these increased taxes. The utility tax is incredibly regressive. Environmental impact, development may harm local ecosystems, including the endangered Kocany salmon and nearby creeks, watersheds, and pollution. And our community character, the proposed changes may alter the unique suburban character of Sammamish. So the SEIS report came out Monday, and it became even more concerning on page 80. Pursuing regional growth center status would improve or provide eligibility for more grants. Does that sound good, you guys? I don't know if you guys know what that means. It's not. Once we build, the city becomes locked into even more housing beyond 4,000 housing units by mandate. Sure, we might get grants for roads and affordable housing as a regional growth center, but we have to build first before we even qualify, and then trust the city to manage the funds. And we all know how that works. Trust is an all-time low commodity right now, just us Inglewood. I'm here once again to implore you to represent current Sammamish citizens and residents, and not future ones. Please represent us. We are an island on a hill. We cannot absorb this population explosion safely, nor do we want to. There is a reason we all chose Sammamish. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to online now.
For the reasonable accommodation, those who have pre-registered by 5:00 p.m. today, please raise your hand if you'd like to give comment.
Good evening, council and everyone in the room. My name's Mary Victor. I've lived in Sammamish now for 25 years. I've lived over half my life in Washington, and I just wanted to speak a little bit about, I've been going to, there's been problems with stormwater and other issues in Inglewood and Tamarack. I happen to live in Tamarack, not Inglewood, but I'm glad that the city is trying to work through the issues that have been caused by the recent things. So I really enjoyed listening to the comments from all the Inglewood people as well, because I think a lot of the thoughts are extremely relevant. But what I want to talk about is, because Inglewood is on a steep hill, it's known as a critical area, and also Tamarack has those. And because we've been developing in those areas and not town center or other places, we've been seeing a lot of trees go, you have water that runs downhill, and then you have, if you're in an area with septic, you're starting to see slimy green algae that goes into the fish streams, including the ones that we're using for Kocany salmon. So if you look at the housing for our city, they've been, the city's been doing its finances over the last six months, half year, and they've really come to the point that we are 85% large, single-family homes that are very expensive, and only 15% other types of housing are dwellings. And because of that, unless you're, like, as you get older, you don't need a large, single-family home, you need a place where you can downsize. Maybe you need a place that doesn't have stairs. Maybe you can't vacuum anymore, so you just want like a smaller unit or a place that you can live. And you're not a person that's, maybe you're going to have a car or drive very much, and if you're in a local center, then you can take transit, and that helps make it work. We have a lot of people that work outside, or, excuse me, work in Sammamish but live outside and drive to Sammamish because there aren't ways that they can live in Sammamish. So we need units for workforce housing, including schoolteachers, police officers, firefighters, and just all the other jobs even, including bagging groceries at your local market. But because we have so many large, single-family homes, there isn't room for the existing people or the people that work here to actually live here. So one of the reasons you need to increase housing is in order to meet those needs. I also go to the Water District meetings for Sammamish Plateau Water that serves most of our city, and they just approved an $8.2 million new water storage tank, because with all the large, single-family homes, they use a lot more water than multifamily homes or apartments or condominiums. And a lot of times, it's just for watering their front yards, and a lot of people, like, never plant in their front yard because it's just part of the old, single-family homes, dead-end cul-de-sacs, that, that they use more water. So you end up, and you, you take those and you spread it across. Whereas if you have stacked units in town center that offer single people, young couples, older people places to live, then we can actually have a community that works, and the finance will work better, because right now, the single-family homes don't pay for themselves, and we're kind of in a crisis for that, which is why the utility tax came. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all for online public comment.
Great. I think that we'll take a five-minute, do we need five minutes? Do we need 10 minutes? Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break so that we can re-center the room, because we're going into kind of a study session in here. So we'll take a break for 10 minutes, back at 7:26. Okay, we are going to continue our meeting, folks. Yeah, you might even want to continue the conversation in the hallway just because we're going to continue the meeting. So we are now looking at, doing a discussion at Sahali Way Corridor Study, selection of preferred alternative. We have Jed, Brent, Janessa, and Greg and Audrey. So Audrey, I believe you're going to kick us off. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. And we're very excited to present kind of where we are with our Sahali Way Corridor Improvements Project. This critical phase of the project is, could be thought of as a master plan for the corridor. It is similar to a stormwater basin plan. This provides the, the city direction for where the, how the corridor will be built over time. Jed will get into that in a little bit in his presentation, but it's a critical master plan for this very important roadway for our city. So thank you, Mayor, again, for the introduction. For the record, I'm Audrey Sarsay, Director of Public Works, and I am joined by Greg Samatio, our Deputy Director of Public Works, as well as Jed Ireland, our Senior Project Engineer, who is also Project Manager for this project. With that, I'm going to hand it off to Jed to introduce the consultant team.
Thanks, Audrey. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm introducing Brent Powell of Partite and Janessa Donato. And we are going to start with the presentation on Sahali Corridor. Just a quick overview of the agenda. We're going to remind the project limits, we're going to go over the three alternatives. These are the ones that we worked with council earlier this year. And we're going to discuss the public feedback and the important topic of speed limit and traffic calming. And we're going to be looking at the city planning documents and how they dovetail into the WIS plan and how they informed this plan. And we'll discuss our next recommendation, and then following steps after a, after alternative is selected. So for your consideration, what do you think of Alternative B as the preferred alternative? And do you concur with the proposed speed management strategy of 35 miles per hour? And we're also going to open the discussion at the end of what additional information is required to influence this decision, and we can discuss next steps as well. Overview, just again, the project begins from the city's commercial center at Northeast 8th and Inglewood, and proceeds north to State Route 202. And our current phase is the master planning phase, which we'll get into later. We're looking at the alternatives in that analysis. So at a high level, what are the outcomes of the study? We're looking at, we are going to satisfy the demands for now and for the future, and bring in our multimodal integration. You know, what are the features that we need that are proposed and recommended by our planning documents? We also take that information, and we let the natural world inform us. Of course, we do geotechnical exploration, we look at the environmental considerations, and we see what our constraints are with the natural world, and also opportunities maybe for stormwater management. And so then we look at the costs, and you can And you can see in the background, there's kind of a faded image of, if you might remember from our slide risk presentation. And so it just shows that where our, this road is conveniently located, the top of a bunch of slides and through slides, outside the city limit primarily. Also, the outcomes are, we look at community engagement. We look at their comments, and we also look at neighboring agencies as stakeholders, including the Northeast Samamish Sutor and Water District. As part of this process of engaging them as a stakeholder, they actually modified their delivery of their CIP for their capital improvement plan for their water mains, meaning that when we build ours, we're not gonna be taking out good, recently-replaced water main. In addition, we look at regulatory compliance and permit issues. Again, the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, it's one of the guiding documents. The corridor plan is a subset. It's looking at a corridor, and the comprehensive plan is really the big umbrella. It meets the goals T1 to T4. T4 was sadly missing from the agenda bill. We made it on the other one, somehow cut it on this one, but it, this one, the design, the approach is to manage the transportation system to limit the negative impacts on the natural environment. Okay, current phase, another way we also call it is the master planning phase, and the core focus is what can we do near-term and long-term on the corridor to bring these features in, to obtain the goals, but something that's also actionable and supported by council and public. And the steps that we did were the goal, the goal-setting, which we'll get into, the feedback loop with the public, and we did the inter-agency coordination, for instance, like WashDOT, King County, looking for opportunities, Northeast Samamish Shore and Water District. And we performed the technical analysis and cost estimates. These are the project goals. This is how we started this process. We, you know, we set the goals. These were worked out with councils. You remember, this was long ago, last year. The high-priority goals, we had medium and lower priority goals. High priority was safety, was at the top, adding sidewalk, bicycle facilities, improving transit, reliability, and connections to those, to that transit. So medium priority were to avoid property impacts and just minimizing costs overall. Lower priority involve these, which include improving driver travel time. Okay. The study team, this is another look at the stakeholders for the group. I would emphasize the partner agencies that we met with at King County, Sound Transit, WashDOT, and the Water District. And this was important to make sure that we were building this, looking at this corridor as, in the context of where it is and where our neighbors, and if we could leverage any opportunities around us. This exhibit shows the existing conditions. We've broken it up into what we call halves, really because the southern portion, between Northeast 8th Street, Inglewood, the commercial center, and Northeast 25th Way is more of an urbanized section. It's built out on the west with sidewalk, planter, curb and gutter, and a bike lane. The northern segment, north of Northeast 25th Way, is really just a typical rural road cross-section. Okay, this is another way to look at the alternatives refinement process, and you can see that we have, we talked about the goal-setting. We've given information about the detailed technical analysis in our presentations, and now we're bringing back the public feedback to help inform council's selection of a preferred And at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Brent to go over that public feedback.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Brent Powell with Partite. Is it on? Is that working? Okay, there we go. So I'll start with a brief overview of the three alternatives that we've got before you and that we also presented to the public. Every alternative that you're seeing in front of you, there's an 11-by-17 page of each of the three alternatives. We also, if it's helpful at some point this evening, we can gather around the table there and look at roll plots of those alternatives. These are the same materials the public saw when we met with them recently. We have three different concepts. They achieve different levels of multimodal integration for the corridor. The first concept is generally spot improvements. So those are improvements at discrete locations. They don't necessarily change the entire corridor. They do focus on transit crossing upgrades and pedestrian and spot safety improvements. Alternative B is a corridor-wide improvement in the north half of the corridor, so between 25th and 37th, everything is within the city of Samamish, when I say the north half of the corridor there. That would be in addition of a sidewalk with planter strip and curb and gutter on the western side of Sahali, to provide a continuous pedestrian route that would connect to the existing sidewalk that's already in the southern portion of the corridor. Bicycles would be accommodated, but not explicitly supported with a dedicated bike lane in Alternative B. And then Alternative C is a full suite of multimodal improvements with lower speed limits baked into that alternative. That would include pedestrian and bike facilities all the way from 8th to 37th. And you can think about Alternative A as kind of the foundation for Alternative B or Alternative C. They both build off of what's included in Alternative A, if that's helpful to think about it in that context. I have graphics here that briefly illustrate what is in front of you on the table, the different schematic views. That's what we've developed during this planning stage, representing different locations of intersection improvements and different locations of segment. We call them linear improvements. These are divided into the north half on this slide, and on the next slide, we have south-half improvements. Happy to answer any questions folks have on these, but these are generally very similar to what you have seen previously, and I think for the sake of time, we will move on to the next few slides here, but welcome to come back if people have questions on the specifics of what is incorporated here. So I want to turn now to the public feedback that we heard. As I said, we shared this information with the public back in April. We ran an online survey, and also had, in this very room, an open-house presentation to the public. That was on April 24th. We did have higher turnout for both of those events. We had a public survey last year and an open-house last year in the similar spring timeframe. Had about 330 comments last spring. We had over 550 comments this year. We had 37 community members attend that public meeting a couple of months ago. And the survey that we asked people, both in-person and online, was a mixture of multiple-choice questions evaluating these three alternatives. Also, we were looking for feedback on how they would rank the alternatives, and we had open-ended questions as well, to be able to gain feedback on either topics that we hadn't covered explicitly in the survey and the website, or to just gain more information about why they voted the way that they did. I would say the in-person feedback we heard was generally consistent with that larger online data set, just to make a note of that. So here's the results of the high-level takeaways from that public feedback. We asked each community member to vote if they either slightly or strongly supported, were neutral, or slightly or strongly opposed each of the three alternatives. We've lumped the slightly and strongly together here. So for Alternative A and B, we've got plurality support, but we do have slightly lower opposition with Alternative A and slightly higher opposition with Alternative B. Alternative C was very clearly a different pattern with strong opposition. Over two-thirds of the respondents marking that as either slightly or strongly opposed to Alternative C. We also asked residents to estimate, if we were to build Alternative A or B or C, how would each of those different alternatives influence their travel behavior on Sahali? And we asked that by different modes, because we were curious if people would change their behavior differently for different modes of travel. With all three alternatives, we saw fairly similar response rates for increases in transit use, at about 5% to 7% increase with each alternative. We saw a bigger difference when we looked at walking and bicycling on the corridor. With Alternative A, 14% of people said they would increase the amount that they walked on Sahali. Again, remember, that's the spot treatment improvement, not the corridor-wide treatment improvement. And with the corridor-wide options, B and C, we saw a near-doubling of that percentage increase. So 29% was the highest, and that was with Alternative B. Bicycling was a similar trend. We saw 9% of people say they would increase their bicycling with Alternative A's improvements, and that jumped to 24% with B and 25% with C. And again, Alternative C is the one that proposes the full bicycle, kind of low-stress corridor, and we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail later on. So those are the numbers on reported travel patterns for that multimodal activity. We did hear some respondents say with each alternative that they would drive less on Sahali, and I do emphasize that. The question was specifically, how would you change your behavior on Sahali? We saw a much larger number of people say they would drive less on Sahali with Alternative C, and we believe that means they'd be shifting to other roads, not that those cars would disappear from the travel pattern. They'd probably take, you know, the Parkway or other routes in and out of the city. And the reason for that, and we'll get to that here in a second, is there's some strong opposition to C that would cause people to want to avoid that road by car. So a brief summary: plurality support for Alternative A and B, majority opposition for Alternative C. In our judgment, the most promising for that multimodal mode shift that this council recognized as a goal would be either Alternative B or C. We heard, in the written, open-ended comments, people mentioning support for crosswalks and shared-use paths and sidewalks, and those were themes that we noted. And we did note a very strong theme against roundabouts, and that is our best guess at why Alternative C is opposed. Alternative C, I didn't say this before, but it does include a proposed six roundabouts in a series to slow speeds. So our best explanation, again, we're taking all the data together here to build this assessment, but we believe that the roundabouts are probably the chief reason, that people are voting against C. The other reason could certainly be the cost, and we did share the cost data with the public, and Alternative C has the highest price tag by quite a bit. We heard some, but I wouldn't even say many, residents reporting they wanted additional travel lanes or even less investment on pedestrian and bike facility within the survey data. And then we did hear a number of comments regarding the speed limit, and when those people made those comments, they were generally supportive of lowering the speed limit. So we wanted to take a pause there. We're kind of the halfway point of the slides, and just pass it back to you all, I believe, Mayor, to see if there's any questions that we could answer at this stage before we dive into some more of the technical information.
Counsel, if you want to put your cards up, if you've got a question, then maybe we can get to them. Does anybody have questions now? Cost member Gupta.
Thank you for the half of the presentation so far. Thank you for work on this. The, so I think Jed had mentioned the low priority of lowering travel time. I think, if I remember correctly, those specifically related to capital improvements, right? Those talking about adding lane miles, which is, I think, why that kind of fell by the wayside. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, I think that's the correct context, and it was specifically for this corridor.
Right. And my understanding is, as we did the Geotech survey, is we're not proposing any improvements from 37th down to SR 202. One, because, you know, city limits and halfway down, but two, because we don't want to add, we cannot add weight to that hillside. So even if we were to consider adding lane miles or adding additional asphalt between Northeast 8th and 37th, it would necessarily stop there, and we would just be creating a choke point. So I just wanted to provide that context as best as I understood it. Is there a reason on Alternative B that we would put, we would not consider putting the planter strip between the road and the bike lane to create, you know, the physical barrier and lower that level of traffic stress?
Brent, did you want to answer that?
I certainly can.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So there are, there's some nuance there with additional elements we haven't touched on yet, but emergency vehicle access and also maintenance accessibility in the corridor. So when we think about urbanizing a corridor, you want to be cautious about those two additional factors, because it actually means you need to have wider pavement available, or else you're going to have a bottleneck if you ever need a maintenance vehicle to park, take care of one of your catch basins. Now you've got one-way traffic, or one lane for two-way traffic, and you get a big backup every time you have to do that type of maintenance work. Or you have to widen your corridor on the other side to have an extra wide shoulder. And then we're starting to talk about widening up against those nasty, steep slopes that we're trying to avoid. So there's a reason and there's a benefit to have a shoulder on both sides, and Alternative B was attempting to use that as a space for bicyclists, but recognizing it's similar to how it is today and actually slightly narrower than it is today. And that would not score highly when you look at a metric-like level of traffic stress. And that's acknowledged when we developed Alternative B as a bit of a trade-off, where you're not seeking that full accommodation of bike activity. But it would be a decent amount more expensive, and you'd almost start to think about something more similar to Alternative C if you wanted to have that physical planter strip separation between bikes and the roadway.
Okay. I might be jumping ahead here, but have we also considered, instead of a planter strip, some other sort of physical barrier that would take up, you know, that would not be the six-foot width? So then you have more room?
Right. We did. We, last time we met with this council, we brought an alternative that included a raised traffic barrier, like you'd see dividing I-5 or something like that. That is a treatment you could use to separate a shared-use shoulder condition from a high-speed corridor like this or a heavy-volume corridor like this. And that was, based on the feedback, we heard that was not the option that we advanced last time around, but it has been something we've looked at, yes.
Okay. And so I understand Alternative C was not favored by the community, but just so I understand, the significantly increased cost, is that mostly right-of-way purchase because of the roundabouts? Or what is driving that significant cost increase?
The single-largest piece of it, more than 50% of the cost of Alternative C, is the improvements that it proposes to the southern half of the corridor. So if you look at Alternative A, it's spot improvements throughout the corridor. If you look at Alternative B, it's those same spot improvements plus a sidewalk improvement in the north half of the corridor, but it really doesn't touch much of the south half of the corridor. So the cost for the south half is very low. Alternative C proposes a pretty significant redevelopment of the south half to provide protected bike lanes and a new sidewalk on the eastern side of the street. And that is several tens of millions of dollars to complete that component. So that is the single-largest reason why Alternative C is significantly more expensive.
Great.
If we wanted to go down the comparison of just the north half of the corridor, that financial gap shrinks significantly if you wanted to compare the B and C in just the north half.
Great. Thank you very much.
If councilors, it doesn't have any other questions, I do have one.
Oh, sorry, didn't see you there. Oh, we've.
I have participants, that's fabulous.
So what would be the, so you talked about emergency vehicles, and we're also talking about, you know, having a lower speed limit around 35 or, you know, 40 miles per hour. So what would be the required lane width for that, to accommodate all of that? Because my understanding is, like, most of the lanes are, like, 12 feet wide right now, and that kind of encourages people to go way faster, yes?
So when we think about the emergency vehicle accommodation, for a two-lane roadway, we're not always just thinking about lane width. We're thinking about lane plus shoulder width. And so for the analysis that we did here, we were looking at about 27 or 28 feet. And Janessa, I can't quite remember which number we settled on, but I think it was within that range of total, either shoulder-to-curb or shoulder-to-shoulder width that you have available. And that allows you to have two-way traffic adjacent to a maintenance vehicle, for example, which is the most common case you're gonna have on this corridor, you know, have, you know, routine maintenance you need to do. So when that happens, you can park the vehicle, still put some cones or barricades down, and still route your traffic without the delay of a flagger control or something similar to that. So it's quite wide, and it's certainly wider than you would have for just two travel lanes.
Sure. And then you talked about jersey barriers and five-to-six-foot-wide planter strips, but did you consider any other types of barriers? Again, if we're talking about lowering the speed limit to 35, doesn't that give us other options for a protected bike lane that's, you know, a raised curb or a narrower planter strip? I mean, I'm not sure that they have to be five feet. That seems really big, right? I've seen ones that are just wide enough to put the streetlights up, right? So they look like they were roughly two feet wide.
We did look at a narrower curb option that was about a two-foot-wide divider. We did look at a narrower curb option that was about a two-foot-wide divider, I think similar to what you're discussing, kind of like a concrete median almost dividing the travel lane from the road, the bike lane. And that is actually part of what's proposed in alternative C in the southern half of the corridor to provide a protected bike facility.
Okay. I didn't, didn't see that. I'll try to look on the bigger version of that. For the metrics, you talked about sort of scoring metrics. Can we get those scoring metrics? Like, we have no idea, like, what the bike stress or pedestrian stress is along each of these segments. So can we get that information?
We have some of that in the presentation tonight. Jed, do you want to?
I can, I can also expand on that. The, the level of bicycle stress, traffic stress, excuse me, pedestrian stress is detailed in the transportation master plan that's adopted.
But we don't know what each of these options does for it, is what I'm saying. How does each of these options address, like, for a particular option on a particular piece of roadway, what is the stress at that point?
We have some slides.
Okay.
They're coming.
Great. Okay. I will, I will be patient. And then can we also get the cost breakdown? So, you know, to really understand, like you said, if, if there are options where it's like, oh, well, this thing right here is what costs $20 million, then maybe we can do other things and not do that thing, right? So it would be really helpful to get a more detailed cost breakdown, other than like, this one's $40 million and this one's $100 million. It would just be helpful to see that, especially if the north end estimates are all very close, then we're really focused on the south end. That would be helpful. And then I know I submitted a bunch of questions. Are you guys going to address those, and I should just hold and wait?
A lot of those are going to be addressed in the presentation.
Then I will wait. Thank you. Oh, sorry, one other big one. At 37th, in our, in our transportation master plan, we talk about having a slip lane at 37th, but I didn't see that in any of these plans.
And we're also going to address that.
Okay.
Well, Jed, I, maybe we can address that right now, because we don't have a slide on it specifically.
Oh, okay.
That is an improvement identified, I believe, in the transit plan for, for the city. And we are still considering it, but it, it gets us into a little bit of tension with the idea of expanding into the steep slopes. And as we've, as we've gone through the study and really uncovered how significant of a barrier that could be, we've been cautious to not promise that that could be part of the solution yet, but we're, we're in the process of still evaluating more of the steep-slope data and information and seeing what that affords us to do. And that is certainly one of the alternatives that we want to, we want to do it if, and recommend it if we feel that structurally and geotechnically we can make that recommendation.
Because I don't feel comfortable making a decision on any of these options without knowing, like, that's obviously not cost into any of these yet.
Correct. That is not.
And then the, the last thing would be, I know we have some limitations as we continue north, but we could still potentially put a curb, a raised curb in to create a protected shared-use path on those shoulders, because even in that northern section, there are mostly pretty wide shoulders. So it would be interesting to understand what we could do there to still not just help our pedestrians or our bikers get to a point, and then we're like, dead end. You know, we might as well just put the sidewalk ends sign here, because we love those, too. So I just, I just think we shouldn't just abandon at 37th. I feel like we should at least do something to allow people. And then there wasn't anything around transit, like, you didn't address transit specifically in any of these alternatives. Like, how do, how do any of these alternatives affect transit? Where are the, where we have bus stops, did you look to see, is there room to put a shelter? Right? We're talking about wanting to put, you know, shelters for, for our transit riders, but I didn't see any of that addressed in any of these alternatives.
It's, it's addressed in all three of them. It's, it's a consistent element of all three to improve the transit stops. And the highlight that we've been making is the connections with new crosswalks across Sahali, so that transit riders could reach, you know, both sides of the street at different points of the day. Those transit stop details are something we would want to work with King County Metro to, to refine during the final design phase, but it, it is incorporated and planned to be improved throughout the corridor. It just hasn't been the focus of, I guess, the alternative study that we're presenting so far, but.
So we don't have any data on how any of these alternatives would affect the actual transit in motion on the road, right? Like, do any of them improve it? Do any of them slow it down?
I can jump in really quick. The transit plan that was adopted by council in 2024 did look at the corridor and outlined some opportunities for the city. Should we choose, so choose to improve transit? And most of those centered around access to transit. We do have a capital program, you'll hear more about this evening, that are, it's focusing on ways that we can enhance some of our, our bus stop locations. Part of that work was actually optimizing, bringing some of the, changing some of the stops from near side to far side. That's all been very much coordinated with our Sahali project team as well, so that that's been a factor in it. Some of those things, like the shelter improvements, we want to make sure that we're doing across the city in a different, in a priority order. Also related to transit or some mobility hub opportunities, that's being looked at with some of our other capital programs in conjunction with this, too.
So wouldn't we potentially have a mobility hub somewhere on the Sahali Way corridor, and shouldn't that be addressed here?
The transit plan, oh, gosh, I might need to pull it up. I know there is a broader mobility hub planned for around denser populations, so in Town Center. And we can look at some elements of some, some features of some mobility hubs along Sahali.
Okay. And do we have any data as to whether, say, option C, for example, where we have six roundabouts and four stoplights? Would that slow transit? Would that help transit because we'd have more predictable flow?
We, we do have travel time data that's part of the presentation, so we'll have this.
But that's just generic. I didn't know if that.
It is, and it, it will apply as well to transit. So there is.
Because it was only like a half a second difference, or eighth of a second, or minute, I think, difference between the three options. So it wasn't, in my mind, it wasn't material, right? If it was less than a minute, it wasn't really.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
Excuse me, Deputy Mayor Lam.
So it appears that there's strong support for lowering the speed limit. I actually support lowering the speed limit as well. So for alternative C, there's roundabouts, six roundabouts, and that's primarily to lower the speed limit. So your recommendation is alternative B, and that would keep the speed limit at 45 at the, like, the northern part. So aren't there alternatives to lowering the speed limit, like speed cameras? I mean, we could still lower the speed limit to 35, right, without the roundabouts?
We can. And we do have, the next section of the presentation is mostly focused on some speed-reduction opportunities.
Okay. I'll wait for that. And my other comment was on the shared-use path. And I actually left a comment when I came to the open house, was the cost between the shared-use path in alternative C versus the cost of the sidewalk in alternative B? And knowing how cost, how expensive sidewalks is, can't we just do a shared-use path in alternative B and see what the cost savings are? And maybe that would, in some way, I don't know, maybe allow for an improved planter strip or some, some type of barrier? So again, like, I'm really curious to see what the cost difference is between the two.
Yeah, we're not prepared to give a precise cost estimates for that right now, but that's something that can easily be done and presented. And so we can come back with that information.
So my question has to do with the demographic data that you polled in terms of the people that answered the survey. Do we have demographic data? Do we have ages? Can we, is there a way to know why they were opposed to B and C? Is there something I can look at? Was it cost, or was it totally just being uncomfortable with roundabout? Because I would like to understand the difference. They're different questions.
We do have demographic data. We use that as best we could to try to understand by neighborhood how the responses were different. That was one of the things we thought might be a factor, is if you live close to the corridor versus you use it as a commuter route exclusively. We really actually didn't see too much difference in the data when we looked at that level. Don't believe we looked through by age or gender or some of those other demographic factors, Mayor, but I will say that our best indication, as we look at those written comments that we received, which were completely optional, and we, we didn't prompt people to respond to any certain topic, we didn't see as many comments about high price tags. We saw some. We saw a lot of comments explicitly opposing roundabouts. So the best we can surmise is that that was the primary factor, but it is, it is a bit of guesswork on our part. We did not ask that explicit question, so we're, we're just piecing it together as best we can there.
Okay. Thank you for that. Councilmember Gupta.
Yeah, first, thank you for the information about the continuous green tea, because that was also, I'm excited about the potential of that. And I'm glad I have the context of why, you know, what the limitations might be. I just wanted to highlight, in the transit plan, we do call out supplemental mobility hub on northeast, at Northeast 25th Way in Sahali, and then a priority mobility hub at Northeast 36th through 37th in Sahali. It is in there.
So, speed limits and traffic calming. We've got a handful of slides here to talk about the speed limit and recommendations we have, as well as traffic calming techniques that we believe could help achieve this lower speed limit. I will preface this by saying that the information you have in front of you reflects what we shared with the public, which did show the 35 mile-an-hour speed limit with alternative C only, and the, the kind of continuation of the existing speed limit with A and B. That's what we shared with the public. That's still what's sitting in front of you today. However, we've got some updated recommendations we'll share with you since that point in time. So, starting off with the benefits if you were to lower the speed limit, we did hear, certainly from you all last year, that that was an area of importance and concern, and we, we heard that echoed through that community feedback as well, which is why we have some updated recommendations for you all after that community feedback came to us. It helps improve that level of traffic stress metric for pedestrians and bicycle facilities. You may well be aware, but we've got some charts in here to illustrate, there's a significant improvement in terms of survivability of a crash event if a pedestrian is struck by a lower-speed vehicle versus a higher-speed vehicle. As you think about making a corridor really a multimodal-focused corridor, it goes hand-in-hand with a lower speed limit typically. And we'll share some current guidance for that as well, from some of the, the national agencies that are looking into this topic. Real quick, kind of nerdy, traffic engineering background for you here. So you may have heard about this metric called the 85th percentile speed. That is where you take 100 vehicles, you look at the 85th highest vehicle and everything below that, and then you set your speed limit based on that. That was the way roads used to be established, and you used to set roadway speed limits based on that 85th percentile number. Kind of leads to a self-fulfilling prophecy, because as we all know, people tend to not drive at the speed limit. They drive slightly or significantly above the speed limit. So you go out and you set a speed limit, then you do that based on the travel speed today, and then you let people drive faster, and then you go test it again, and it just keeps ramping up and up if you don't control it. We've gotten smarter as an industry in the past handful of decades. We still rely on that metric. It's still valuable, but it's not the only factor. It's not the end-all, be-all anymore. So what is important is making sure that a roadway has the characteristics that match the speed limit that you post for the roadway, and that you have some predictability. So you think about a situation where you're not, you don't see that roadway speed limit sign, would you know how fast to go? You know, that, that type of roadway is the, the perfect example. We can't always get there, but if you look at some of the guidance from FHWA, they do talk about that 85th percentile speed, you can go as, as low as five miles an hour below that, and that's kind of the recommended bottom speed limit to pick. So with that, I'll share this slide here, which brings into some of the guidance from NACTO, which is an agency, an association you may have heard of, the National Association of City Transportation Officials. And they, they're really zoomed in on this question about city speed limits. They're a very urban-focused agency. Their recommendation is for a corridor like this, where we have relatively low number of intersections, we have almost zero driveways on this corridor, and even if we're to build sidewalks and bike lanes, it's not going to be like a downtown where you have tons of activity every single second of the day. It's going to be a relatively low-activity corridor, even if you build it out. And for that combination of activity and what they call conflict density, you're talking about a 35 mile-an-hour recommended speed limit. You'll notice their guidance actually doesn't even provide an option that goes north of that. It caps out at 35 for an urban area. The chart on the left is what I was speaking to earlier. The, the bottom axis of that chart is the impact speed, so the speed of the car that hits a pedestrian. And the axis on the, the left there is the likelihood of death for that pedestrian in that incident. And you can see it, it obviously increases over, you know, as speed increases, it increases there. And if you were to compare a 45 mile-an-hour to 35 mile-an-hour speed limit, you're seeing a pretty sizable difference in survivability rates. So if we take that 35 mile-an-hour number, we can start to also look at the data on the corridor today. So we collected this data last year. This is reflecting peak hour travel patterns with the 85th percentile speed in the two different colors there. Each color is a different direction of travel. And this graph is kind of the, it's the full corridor laid out on a line graph, basically. So at the very right side of the graph is the city center, the Northeast 8th Street area. The far-left side of the graph is the SR 202 segment. And the dashed black line that runs through this chart is the posted speed limit that's out there today. So you can generally see, your 85th percentile speeds are higher than your posted speed limit. That's not terribly surprising. Many roads are like that. You do have some that are dramatically higher, that, you know, spike 10 miles an hour above your posted speed limit. And you see that especially in that transition zone, where your speed limit drops, but your driver behavior does not drop automatically. So keep that in mind, that it doesn't, people don't just see a sign and slow down instantly. So I just mentioned that five mile-an-hour difference you could have that FHWA permits, if you think about lowering by five miles an hour. So we took those, those red and blue lines, we dropped them down by five miles an hour. And you can see many of them are now under your posted speed limit, and some of them are even touching that line of 40 miles an hour. So there's, even with the existing travel behavior out there, you could start to make the argument and justify a 40 mile-an-hour posted speed limit. I wouldn't necessarily do it everywhere, because you can see there's certainly spikes above that, but many points along the corridor would justify that today. But if we want to get to that 35 mile-an-hour number, which is our current recommendation with alternative B, it introduces this gap. So you have to solve that gap and change the engineering of the road to change the travel patterns of the drivers to achieve that number. At a minimum, achieve that number at your intersection points where you're going to have people crossing, but potentially also change it segment-wide and corridor-wide, where people are going the, the full length of the corridor. So with that, I'm going to pass it to my colleague, Janessa, to talk through the traffic calming options we've got on the table here.
Great. Thank you, Brent. Good evening. Thanks for, for your time. So I'm going to spend the next few minutes kind of discussing traffic calming. It's not really a slide. I'm just going to have to give a quick background information. Oh, yeah, sorry. So as we know, traffic calming can be a very helpful tool to help lower speeds and/or to lower traffic volumes. In this case, we're really looking only to lower speeds, as Sahali 228th is, is designed to handle high volumes of traffic as a principal arterial. So for lowering speeds, there are kind of two main categories of, of traffic devices. First is kind of taking this more passive approach by installing, you know, speed-limit signs or radar speed signs. And then the second approach is kind of implementing more physical devices that actually affect driver travel path, either horizontally or vertically. Some quick examples of horizontal devices are roundabouts, medians, curb extensions. Vertical device examples are speed cushions and raised crosswalks. For principal arterials, we are sort of limited in our options as well, because vertical devices aren't typically appropriate. As Brent mentioned, they do kind of impact emergency response. So we want to make sure our design does, you know, allow for safe and, you know, timely passage of emergency vehicles. So I guess, the next slide. Along Sahali, we have two strategies to achieve the speed reduction at the intersections and crosswalks. And the first configuration is installing a series of roundabouts throughout the corridor. And the first configuration is installing a series of roundabouts throughout the corridor to significantly reduce the speeds at the intersections. And as they would be kind of installed in a series, it would also encourage lower speeds in between each roundabout. As Brent mentioned, this was included in alternative C. And with this configuration, we do expect the maximum amount of speed reduction at the intersections with typical vehicular speeds of 15 to 20 miles an hour through the roundabouts. The second strategy is this combination of traffic calming treatments. And some viable options for Sahali are the radar speed signs, channelization to help give a visual narrowing effect of the roadway, curb extensions that would help shorten pedestrian crossing distances, and then medians where they can fit. So this strategy does kind of focus the speed control at the potential vehicle pedestrian conflict points. So overall, kind of expect a lower speed reduction, or I guess, yeah, lower speed reduction effect at the intersections of around five miles an hour. And so this slide here just gives some real world examples of the devices that I mentioned. Going from left to right there, we have the radar speed sign, pavement markings, typical curb extension, and then a median. Also want to note, it's not shown on the slide, that for this particular strategy, you know, this can be built kind of as a first phase project at a lower cost compared to the series of roundabouts. Doing, from our simulate, time travel simulation, if we do reduce the speed to 35 miles an hour, there's going to be an additional 45 seconds of travel time in each direction. And so, oh, yeah.
Sorry, just for clarification, was that 45 or 425?
Oh, 45. 45 seconds. So now we'd like to present an overall alternative comparison summary. And as you can see in the second column there, it also includes a column for the existing conditions slash no build, also for comparison. So starting with alternative A, which again is the transit crossing improvements plus the kind of sidewalk spot improvements, you'll see there that the level of traffic stress for both pedestrians and bicyclists have values of four, which do not meet the guidelines as stated in the TMP, which is, the minimum is a value of two. With this, with alternative A, we employ the speed control strategy of the combination of traffic calming treatments. You'll see to the planning level opinion of cost, including inflation for this alternative is in the range of 23 to 28 million. Next for alternative B, this again has the continuous sidewalk facility with accommodation for bikes. You'll see the level of traffic stress here for pedestrians is improved with a value of two. And the planning level opinion of cost is in the range of 38 to 43 million. And then again, just to reiterate, for alternatives A and B, with the reduced speed limit, 35 miles an hour, we will see the vehicular travel times, you know, with that increase of 45 seconds, you can see broken down there per direction and per AM, PM peak. And then lastly, for alternative C, again, this is the multimodal improvements alternative with the series, series of roundabouts. You'll see for the level of traffic stress, this alternative does meet the minimum guidelines as stated in the TMP. However, since it does kind of provide that maximum amount of speed control, you'll see the travel times are even greater. I think that amounts to about a minute and a half additional time compared to existing conditions. And again, we've talked about this previously, the much higher cost, and it's the alternative that the majority of the public does oppose.
Okay, thanks, Janessa. Now, bringing it back, I just want to highlight some of the relevant policy guidelines that we have. The Climate Action Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, we had talked about that, the transportation element, and the goals one through four. Also, we have the SMAMIS 2024 Local Road Safety Plan. This is called out in the TMP. And what this does is it looks at potential, just because of the geometry of the road, maybe relevant roads that are similar, even if we don't have these particular history of crashes. It looks at what kinds of things you want to improve. And so we're looking, this corridor is singled out for reducing bicycle crashes, pedestrian crashes, and fixed vehicle crashes. And then if we go to the next slide, we'll see also that this one supports the state's objective of target zero. It is an objective, you know, that's also tied to a lot of grants. And so one of the things that we do to look at that is we update our local road safety plan. And so this is consistent with that. We have our transit plan, and so we've looked at the crosswalk evaluations. You know, we're consistent with that, the stops along Sahali. And then again, this is the Northeast 37th Way that we had discussed, that green tea. This is something that can be handled, that we're planning to handle in the final design. There's some, there's going to be some cost considerations because that widening is on the top of a slide that would have instability. And so we have to look at that specifically to see if that, you know, is something that's reasonable that, and so that would be part of that more final engineering phase rather than this higher level look. And then the SMAMIS Transportation Master Plan, this is where the level of traffic stress comes from. And so I think we'll go to the next slide. We're partially meeting that with B, and we meet it for both bikes and peds with C. And now this gets to the final. Staff is recommending alternative B with the 35 mile an hour speed limit. The reason for alternative B achieves the pedestrian level of traffic stress, it provides the enhanced traffic crossings, it had a high level of support with the public and with their determined usage. The trade off is that because it's lower cost, but it, it doesn't provide the stronger bicycle accommodation and the, the speed control benefits that you get with roundabouts. And next slide. This is just looking ahead when we go to the next, after we've selected an alternative, this is like what's, what's coming. We would be then taking the preferred alternative and then coming up with a phasing scheme. How do we deliver it in the short term, near term, and then for long term? And so we'd be breaking that down. This is an example of some of the potential phases for alternative B should that have been, should that be selected. And the next steps, we have a few slides on this. You know, for bringing this home, what is possible is that once we adopt the corridor plan, we could start going to a 30% design. As the schedule is now, potentially as early as October, we could be coming with a, a design, with a supplement to go for 30% design and begin this process. Also, this talks about where the final analysis would be at. This is what the final product would be for the corridor plan. It's going to have these refined costs, the full phasing analysis, the risk analysis, and the, the full layout of the preferred alternative. And so now again, we're coming to the questions for council. And so this is, we're asking the council's feedback on alternative B. How does this stack up as a preferred alternative? And you, is, does the council concur with the proposed speed management strategy to lower the speed limit to 35 miles per hour? And we're also looking for feedback on what additional information does council need in order to make, you know, decision? And then also the timing. How can, you know, what are some ideas for how quickly can that information be done and when we could possibly return to council? And with that, we're open for questions.
Great. So I'll start with councilmember Stewart.
Great, thank you. Appreciate the extra information. I still think I have a number of questions that I sent in that have not been answered. Do you want to handle those offline, or do you want me to ask them here?
Yeah, I think we can, we can answer them here.
Okay, great. So one is that I'd love to see the specific goals that you've identified here and, and how we actually score each of these alternatives against that, right? For me, option B seems like, why would we plan to fail, right? It doesn't meet our level of service for bikes. And that feels like a nonstarter to me. I feel like we have to come up with something that at least tries to meet that. It, it doesn't improve it at all, right? It's still a level of stress four for bikes. And if we're trying to improve people being able to access transit, one way they might access transit is trying to ride their bike to a transit stop, which means they're probably going to have to be on this corridor for some period of time. So that's a really tough pill for me to swallow. So I think we need to see like you guys often do with your scoring rubrics of how does each alternative score against those goals? And then also I had asked about if we were to go with like an option C, why do we have six roundabouts, four stoplights, and we still have several miles of a center turn lane? We could, right? If we have all those roundabouts and intersections, restrict left turns and just require anywhere but at a, at a roundabout or a stoplight, and then people would just have to go up to the next place where they could turn around, and then we wouldn't have to have that, you know, 12 feet of center turn lane, which would significantly reduce right of way costs. It would significantly reduce the impervious surface, and it might give us a little more wiggle room on, you know, the, the bike and, and ped areas.
Yeah, I can address that one. If we were to limit that, in a way, we might be narrowing the pavement corridor that's available for emergency vehicles. I think that might take more thought for us to consider that specifically in the context of alternative C, but that's something that we could, we could look at and provide information on.
Because another part of that might be, as you're looking to have space, is have we considered how e-bikes play into this? You know, shared paths are a nice idea. And for bikes and peds, that's already a little bit dicey, but you throw an e-bike in there. And now especially, I mean, I don't know if you've seen, we have like a, an e-bike gang of like 12-year-olds riding around the city. I don't know if any of you guys have seen them. They're all over the place. And so I just, I would love to know how we're thinking about that. I think that is kind of the future, at least for a while. And so, you know, if we needed to have extra space and you wanted to have an unprotected bike lane, maybe that's for e-bikes, but for other people, I'm not sure that, that that's really going to work. So just want to understand, you know, what that is, what those plans are. And then in options A and B, I know we got feedback from the public, but you didn't tell them we were going to reduce the speed when you asked for their feedback. And I'm going to guess, and we don't know, but I'm going to guess a lot of people didn't like option C because they don't want to slow down. And so I really think we're going to need to understand what you're proposing for these traffic calming measures, because while I don't love the price tag on option C, I need to know that if we set the speed limit at 35, we're going to have some chance of people actually going anywhere near 35, because I just don't see that happening because you changed the sign. I still think they're going to go 55. And then one thing you said is that the medians are way less expensive than the roundabouts. Can you address why that is?
So we were describing the, the combination of treatments that we were speaking about for traffic calming at the intersections. Those would be significantly less expensive than roundabouts because they just, you, you don't have to replace the roadway to build them. There's significantly less utility work. Some of them are even just basic channelization and signing improvements, which, you know, are extremely inexpensive compared to the cost of a, a roundabout project.
Okay. How much does an average roundabout cost on a road that's only one lane in each direction?
So we, we did crunch some numbers on this because we knew that you had that question, councilmember. So it, it certainly varies depending on the size of the roundabout and really how aesthetically pleasing you want to make the roundabout. You have a lot of flexibility with roundabout choices. We didn't want to take any shortcuts at this stage, so we've kind of assumed a standard landscaped roundabout like you, you have many in the city. Those costs can be, when you factor in design, potentially right of way, you'll probably need a little bit of right of way, at least easements to construct it, the construction cost itself, and the construction management. Those costs can reach $7 million for, for a single intersection. They can reach even $9 million. It can, it's, it's a large number.
I'd really love to see that breakdown because I'm not hearing that from other transportation engineers, so.
And I will say, it depends on the features that you put into a.
But I mean, like, you're like a whole order of magnitude off, right? We're not talking like, they said it was like a million. They're talking 300,000, 400,000 versus 7 million. So that seems like a really big gap.
The basis for our numbers is recent construction projects and current engineering efforts.
Sure. Yeah, so I'd just love to see the breakdown on that. Thanks.
We'd be happy to provide that.
Councilmember O'Farrell. Thank you. I have to, just, just wanted to concur with councilmember Stewart on her questions, and I have similar questions. And then really, my only comment is that I think tonight, I'm not really ready to make a decision. I feel like I have not spent enough time with this material. My, my attention has been elsewhere with other issues for the city, so, and I have not spent enough time with this material to give an informed opinion. So I would really just like more time on this, so I'm not really prepared to say how I feel. And I hear what you're saying, and I liked kind of the feedback. I would like some more, probably more data on what the public had to say and why they felt the way they did, but I just need more time to feel that the alternative is in front of us, whichever one we pick, because all of them have a huge price tag associated with them, that we're going to get what we really want, as opposed to getting some improvements. And at the end of the day, the road is only just slightly better off than it was prior. So I just would like more time.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you. Did we, we started with 10 alternatives, didn't we, like a few months ago? So I'm like, yeah, I think the only thing I'm a little confused about is how we got it down to three as a council, but now we're still like, oh wait, we need way more time. So I'm like, oh no. And I understand there's questions and things that will come up. And so I guess one of my questions is if, obviously tonight, you are not going to get an answer, as we can tell, if we did choose an answer, how much wiggle room do we have for everyone's great ideas? Or an alternative, sorry, not an answer.
Oh, I can address that. So we do have wiggle room in terms of like B and C. You know, we can provide those cost differences. We could add features to B. We could have B plus of elements that we like from C, for instance. If we did anything much different, like let's say we added a cycle path or a side path or, you know, something different, we, that would be more time and analysis. But for, if you like features in C and you want to see something in B at a particular element, that's something we could probably quickly provide, you know, even, you know, within the next week or so with more detailed information about what the price differences would be and breakdown of what the cost difference is to justify them.
I mean, because obviously I was comfortable with B, I think, a few months ago with understanding that as we get to more like full design or 30% design that we had some wiggle room. So I think that's why I was okay with this. And then the speed limit, so on here on the map, it just said speed transition at 15th, so just cross that out, and it's basically all the way to 37th. Is that right? Okay. And I do agree with that. And I don't think that you were just planning on putting just a sign. Obviously, in alternative B, you have several other measures kind of along the way. So I don't know, because there seems to be a ton of questions from everyone, if like twos and threes meetings would be more helpful, like we are doing with David or something. I don't know to, because it sounds like, I'm not sure what your goals are. If you wanted to get 30% by October, how and when this would come back? So you could get an answer.
Well, that, that could be aspirational. I mean, that, that is a potential timeline. We could also provide some information, like some of the breakdown of some of the elements that were desired for like the shared use path, the shared path on the north end, so that we're reducing the bike level of traffic stress. I mean, that's something we could provide relatively easily because we've already done that analysis. So we could provide that. So something that's like B plus with some additional features that bridges the gap if we wanted to look at also removing some or figuring out what the price is for roundabouts. We could even have a narrative discussing the differences and narratives of like ones that we have in the city versus maybe these ones that are more like function as traffic circles that are just kind of a raised shield. Yeah, things like that. I mean, we. I mean, we might be able to have a discussion of that. But we haven't analyzed costs for these kind of simpler options for roundabouts. They have a different effect on level of traffic stress, for instance. And so we don't, so we have some flexibility, particularly if you see something that you like in C and B that we can combine.
No, that sounds good. I mean, I don't want a no action. I don't want alternative A. I think sometimes roundabouts, obviously, I think they're newer to America. Some people are just like, what do I do with this? Or at least I've seen, either like driving over the edge or just not yielding to. So they kind of create hazard in themselves. But I like the idea of a B-plus or a hybrid. I just don't know how you would get seven ideas to be, what would that B-plus be? But good luck. Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Lamb. And then you said. So my take on the roundabouts is that people just don't like them. I mean, if the majority of people, you know, want to lower the speed limit, I think most people were focused on the fact that there was, that there are roundabouts. Driving on 4th, there's three roundabouts, and they're a pain, actually. I will say that. And the ones on Issaquah Falls City Road, because it's bigger and there's two of them, they're easier to get through. And if I take a look at this one segment from 25th to 8th, I mean, they're very close. It'll be like similar to what's on Southeast 4th. So I'm, so that's just kind of my reaction to the roundabouts. But like I said earlier, I'd really like to see a shared use path in alternative B. And I could support alternative B. I'd like to spend more time on what that shared use path could look like because it just seems, based on what's online, there's so many options to what a shared use path could even look like. You know, the width, you know, what are the kind of amenities? Or is it a curb? Or is it more of a barrier? It's just like, I'd just like to see a little bit more exploration on what that could be.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Deputy Mayor Lamb's comments and Councilmember Stuart's. I think, so when we first started this process, my understanding was, as we narrowed down the alternatives and we got, you know, we narrowed them down to three, we would be presented with sort of a menu of like, we like this from this, and we like this from this. And I feel like that, I haven't felt like we've gotten that opportunity yet. So that's what I would like to see is, you know, we talked about one of the previous alternatives having that concrete barrier. And while we didn't choose that as a, one of the top three, I'd still like the opportunity to take that feature and say, okay, what if we add that to alternative B? What does that look like? What, where are the limitations? What are the opportunities? So, you know, twos and threes, maybe that would be a good opportunity. But I'd like to see the cost breakdowns and just what's possible while maintaining what we need for emergency services and traffic throughput. I do support lowering the speed limit with the range of traffic calming options. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your work.
Councilmember Tree.
So can you tell me, is the scope, the scope was initially from 8th to 202? That's the scope. Okay. So I think first, I need to see, I mean, if you want me to agree that there's one of these options that would work for me, then I need to see what we're going to do from 37th down to 202. And I don't see any of that. So that'd be the first thing. Second thing is, is this is a 20-year plan? Or is it based on our TMP, which would be a 20-year plan? Is that the scope also of, like, I'm looking at a timeframe, right? So can I put it to the comp plan and just say, comp plan's a 20-year plan that we relook at in 10 years? Is that fair to say we're doing that with this corridor?
Well, there's different ways to look at it. We are looking at the traffic out to 2044, right? If that's one way, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, that's, thank you. Yeah. So, yeah, so, and those are the numbers you're using? Or that's the data you're using? Okay, good. So the first thing that drew my attention was the fact that February, we looked at this project, it was 100 million, and now it's 110 million. So what happened from February to today that changed the price?
The difference in price was we have reflected inflation. And phasing this project, certainly alternative C, we'd expect would be done in phases. And those phases would occur over different years. And as you have different years for construction, you've got different amounts of inflation that apply. So the numbers we presented last time were uninflated, essentially 2025 dollars. These reflect now the inflation component as well.
And that the project would be done in phases?
Yes. And we made an assumption of four phases as a preliminary assumption for alternative C.
And so your first, and I don't know what those four phases are. I'm going to guess that the first one is from 8th up to 12th, or maybe all the way up to 25th. I don't know. You're not going to get that far, are you, in the first phase? Okay. So what was the, what's the plan for dealing with, from 8th up to 12th, dealing with the, there's that inner, that corridor, that section right there, very problematic. So sidewalk is only three foot wide on one side. There's telephone poles in the sidewalk. And then that's on the west side of the road, if I'm headed north. And then if I look at the other side of the road, I come, turn and come up, or go straight on the road, and now I have this convergent of two lanes down to one lane with the possibility of turning into this neighborhood. And now I got to wedge over and keep moving forward. And then, yeah, okay, so now it's not safe for anybody. And so to me, that's like, if you're doing spot safety, this is, this initial start to the project from 8th is like, how do you, what are the options for us to solve these problems? Like, what are you looking at that says this will work? That any of it will work?
Well, the concept, you know, C, we have alternative C. If you want to build on that side, we can. But of course, if you look, as you approach 12th, you have a steep drop-off past that one neighborhood that's connected. And so those walls are expensive. You have, you have a big impact to the price by widening on that side. The alternative B then leverages what you have on one side already. And so then you have that cost savings, it's a trade-off. And then, and so what you do is you increase your costs on the west side, on the north half, where you don't have any sidewalks or amenities.
So it seems to me then if, so I'm going to rip that sidewalk up and take that utility poles and drop all the utilities underground. And there you go. And next thing you know is I can do a shared path then. That's the green bike path that we see in Seattle and other places. Bellevue's got it going on right now, especially around 100, in several places in the city, North Rip Way. But, because I drive that too, to go to school. But the whole idea is in shared pathway, right? And then if it's small curb, and I look at the size, 17 feet, well, I'm going to say it's not 17 feet when I get down to the bottom. But let's just say it's 17 feet the whole way. I do shared bike path. How much does it cost me to do shared bike path instead of sidewalk? Because to me, that just seems like, if it's, if the plan is multimodal, plus vehicles, they're on the road, okay? So I know they're there. But if it's multimodal, then I don't see why we're not seeing a plan that has shared pathway at least on one side of the road, right? And if it could be on both, that'd be awesome. But I think there's some constrictions, you know, there's some areas where, okay, that's not doable, right? But this intersection's definitely, the current asphalt that's on the ground just needs to be adjusted, I guess, would be one. And I don't know how to do that. Don't, I'm not an engineer. I don't know how to do it. I just look at it and go, okay, wait a second. I have the width here. And then, but I also then also am aware that, okay, coming down that hill, you're, I've been down it a few times on my bike, and I've gone up it too. So it's fast. So how do I also then, at the same time, make it so that people aren't coming down that hill at breakneck speed into a light and right next to a boys' and girls' club? So it's not an easy solution, Brett. But there's got to be a solution there that says, hey, not just reducing the speed, but I think it's genesis, you know, it's like, how do I traffic calm that intersection then? So that when people come onto that intersection, it's safe and people feel safe, right? So if that's a phase, I get that. If we can fix that part of it, that's, I think, like a, whatever the cost is, if you tell me that's $11 million or that's $10 million, I don't think it'd be that much. But for the safety reasons alone there, I think I could sell that section to the public and just say, hey, or we as a staff, as a city, we could sell it and just say, hey, because of the speed, the safety here and the concerns, and then the amount of volume we could get out of it too, and the safety part, you could sell it, right? But you're not going to, I don't think you're going to sell it in the way it sits if you don't do anything to it at all. So something has to happen at that, at this section of it. The other, so the other one was, let's see, address the walkway as part of that. And then the bus stops. I, I just always wonder, so is that the, sorry. Now Pam asked this question, Councilmember Stuart asked this. It's a good question, by the way, is where are they going to be? What, so, and I don't want them at the intersection, sorry. If I look at safety again, where would I want to catch my bus? Well, I need to catch the bus in a place where I'm safe. And if we put in roundabouts for traffic calming and speed limit, then it's not in the intersection. So I don't know, is that the 30% design? That those all get shifted mid-block? Or my crosswalk's mid-block? Because as soon as you start doing that, if you go roundabout and mid-block crossing and roundabout, then, shoot, most of the time, people are going to do 25, 30 miles an hour. So, because, especially during the summertime. So I think you have a, there's a solution here. And if we take the roundabouts and turn them from being full-blown, $7 million roundabouts, wow. Okay, I'm not doing that. Shrink them, right? I don't, I don't need the center. See, I've seen them in Seattle too, like this. You know, you can haul, you can haul 35 through the roundabout, okay? I've seen emergency vehicles just roll right over the top of them because they're not raised very high. And they're over the top of those things doing 35, even 40 miles an hour. Yeah, it's a little bumpy for them, but they get to where they're going. So if you just reduce the size of the center, then that reduces the need for acquiring any land. So now I'm saving money there too. So I just look at the roundabouts, and there's all kinds of different roundabouts that are out there. And so I just, I just don't, I like roundabouts. I think we should do roundabouts the whole way because it's about the speed, okay? The only other thing I'd say is, when you get to the second section of the Sahale Drive headed all the way out to the 202, if there's any way we could do some kind of treatment, like a raised, we have some raised boardwalks here in the city already. Is it 8th? 24th. It's on 24th. It's beautiful. Here, I got a picture of it even. I brought it because I was like, dang it. Right, it's beautiful. So we have this already in the city. And, you know, biker and a pedestrian sharing this area. Now, this one's really wide, but it's just, this is right over the top of a wetland. So, and the wetland's doing fine. And people get to walk on it and ride their bikes on it. So it's elevated. Now, this one happens to be, this one's pretty much at road grade. But, okay, so it's raised two feet, four feet, six feet, I don't care. What do you raise it up? To make my riding experience even lovable at times? So I'm not getting undulated and kids could ride it. Elderly people could wa, so, okay, benefit, there's benefit and benefit and benefit. I don't know what the cost is to do a raised or elevated walkway or boardwalk. But again, it would be something that the city, we could go and sell to the public as an amenity to all the residents and say, hey, here's a pathway that you can enjoy and take in the natural beauty that is part of San Mamish. Because this section is beautiful. I mean, you're right at the preserve too. So I mean, if you, we connect it to the park, then we connect it down to the bottom. Then we connect it to the Emerald Necklace all the way down to 50th. I mean, then we could even go to state and King County and other organizations to say, hey, help us build this. Here's, here's our multimodal. It gets me on my bike, on my electric bike or my scooter, all the way down to 50th. And then I'm at, in a kind of a short, weird way, but I get to light rail. And I'd actually do that if I lived on the plateau, okay? I don't see anything like that in any of these plans. And so to me, that's a lot cheaper than sidewalk. So I'm not a big, even though I like sidewalks, don't get me wrong, but I'm not a big proponent of doing sidewalks on the second, this, what I would call your second and third and maybe even fourth phases of this. But a raised walkway that matches then to the road and then comes back up and moves out, it'd be awesome. So anyway, if we, if it's a 20-year plan and we're paying for the design, then before I move to 30%, give it to me at this level. Let me look at it and go, okay, I like B-plus, half a C. Thanks.
Thank you, counsel. I have a couple of questions. I know that you guys interface with King County. And I'd like to understand, at what point in this process do you interface with King County? Again, to understand what their plans might be to marry it up. Both Councilmember Tree and I would dearly love King County to do a roundabout at the bottom. We've talked about that before. But I'd like to understand how that factors into your thinking now.
I can address that. So it would, so we did talk to King County. This was early in the process, when, before we were looking at the alternatives and starting to, you know, compare them. And for King County, you know, they, they look at this, they've done a lot of slide remediation and repair in this area. They've had a catastrophic failure in '82. And so now we've got the dewatering facility that we, they have their own. We've taken over some in our jurisdiction. So they're not, they're looking at just keeping the road open. And even now with their culvert replacement projects, they're dealing with issues of the slides. They're not looking, I don't think they're looking to put more money into expansion.
I'm sure you're right.
In terms of the round, in terms of the roundabout, there is, there was a Washdott corridor study. And they looked at the corridor. And they did look at a long-term plan to optimize that. And the, one of the ideas was a roundabout. But there's also six intersections going into Redmond that are not serving well during peak hour. And so it's just, it's a large, it's just a large undertaking. And so I think there would have to be high-level talks and negotiation to try to see if we could, you know, move things a little bit. And they have a lot of work to do. It's not just that intersection.
Oh, no, I'm aware. I just wondered, just kind of if there had been anything recent. Only because I know everybody's budgets are hit hard and that they've lost funding. So if they thought they had funding, they don't have it anymore. So I could see this one going way off, way off, not on a back burner, like way off. So I just want to make sure, I guess, that anything that we're contemplating probably contemplates the fact that King County isn't going to do anything. Because I don't think they are.
That might be a safe assumption.
I'm going to go with that one.
Jed, could I add on to that?
No, please.
We did present, we asked them about the opportunity for a kind of regional trail facility that would go up and down Sahale, through the King County portion, maybe to Redmond. They effectively told us they had no interest in advancing that.
Go fish.
You know, for staffing reasons or budget reasons or all of the above. So that was, it came off the list for us as a, an alternative that we wanted to advance.
Okay. So for me, I am desperately worried about the e-bikes. Desperately worried. Somebody's going to crack their skull open. And it's going to happen probably this summer at some point. So I, I do want to find a way that we have a shared use path that is safe for whoever is on the road. I also want to understand maintenance costs. Because if we do some kind of weird funky paint, we'll have to repaint it. Never mind the fact it might be slippery for someone on a bike. So I need to understand what the long-term costs for some of these solutions might be. Because some might prove to be pretty expensive in the long run. I like the idea, as Councilmember Stuart had talked about, understanding the unit pricing so that I understand, it costs this, it costs that. I'm good with the shield. That's fine. I don't need a petunia in there. I just need the shield. And because they do work. They do work. I lean in more into the B solution as probably being I lean in more into the B solution, as probably being closer, I do think what we add with anything that we do here, it will be safer to cross the street, a hundred percent, safe to cross the street, and that's what I, what I look at when I'm on that road, is how do people safely get onto the road if they're in a car, how do you safely cross the street if you've got a stroller and a dog? Because right now, not great, not great. I'd also like to understand, are there opportunities where, if, say we picked a variant of B, for example, is there something that we could understand, like you've talked about phases like, we could do this little piece right here, and that would be fast, because for whatever reason, it might be cheaper to do it now than to wait? So I know the costs are gonna nothing but go up, I, I understand that, and that you're gonna have a really hard time giving us costs that don't fluctuate by double digits.
To that point, we, I'll scroll back up here one slide, that is one of the items we've identified after we select a preferred alternative to develop a phasing plan, because we know that's important for actually executing the project and figuring out, where do you start your design, where do you start your construction? So, we, we do plan to study that with the preferred alternative that we end up selecting, yes.
Just one quick question, is it possible to, to distinguish between T roundabouts and the full intersection roundabout? Because aren't some of the roundabouts on here just a T roundabout?
As in a three-leg intersection?
Yeah, three, yeah.
Um, yes, many of them are.
Yeah, many of them.
I think actually potentially all of them are.
Is there a way to just designate that, hey, this is, like, it's three point one in, one out there, and here, just kind of give us a little drawing that, whatever this little, instead of a red circle, if you just throw a T roundabout on there?
I see what you mean.
And flip it whatever direction it actually is going?
Certainly, yeah.
It's, sorry, it's just a simple little thing, but I think it would help us understand, too, because then, I mean, because the cost is different between a T and a full four circle.
Yeah, and we do have one four-leg roundabout, and that's
Yeah, there's a few of those, too.
Twenty-eighth, and the rest are three-leg, but, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
That'd be easy to do.
Do you feel like you have enough direction to be able to move forward? Oh, I am so sorry, I did not see that, okay, Pam.
I am sorry, I just, I can't let go of this, I kind of have a, a personal bias against those center turn lanes that just go down the center of the roadway, and they get used very little, and it's just all this pavement in the middle of the road, so I understand we need to have room for emergency vehicles, but, and I did, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I did watch it, and, and there was a discussion of sort of a, a B plus, you know, sort of an à la carte menu, or a C minus, or something like that, because I do think the difference between option B and option C is huge, and you can see that in the price tag, it's more than double, and I feel like we kind of went from this to, you know, kind of that. I do think there are options to still be able to have, you know, lanes that are narrower to slow people down with paint, right, to kind of put those on there, have a, a shoulder that could be for, potentially for a bike lane, because on our, on our shared-use path, we could have a speed limit for bikes, so, to help accommodate, like, e-bikes, right? So if somebody wants to go fast, or even those, you know, they call them the spandex riders, right, who like to ride really fast, maybe they shouldn't be on a shared-use path or something, and, and so I think there are options there, right, where you could still have your eleven-foot lanes, you could have two, three-foot shoulders, that gets you twenty-eight feet for your emergency vehicles, right? And then you could, you know, we don't need five, we don't need a, a two-foot curb separating the, the roadway from the bike path and a six-foot planter, right? I mean, I love the idea, I know planters are pretty, but you plant stuff in them, and then we have to water it, and then we have to go cut it, and the watering is not part of our sustainability plan, right? So, and the, the ongoing maintenance of having to go cut it, I know we have a lot of areas in the city that we just can't keep up with, I have ridden my bike where we have only sidewalks to ride on, and you, I'm only five-three, I get decapitated by things, so I can only imagine what normal humans have to face, so, I, I just think that, that there are options that we haven't looked at in the middle somehow, because I really, I'm really uncomfortable with picking option B, where we fail the first time out on our bike, uh, level of safety, right? I just, I don't like to plan to fail, I know sometimes we, we plan and we still fail, but at least we tried, this feels like we're not trying, so I, I just, I have trouble with that, and I also think we need to, as we talk to the public, you know, it's my understanding, if we lower the speed limit, we actually increase the throughput, right? So the capacity of the roadway actually increases to a point, and I think around that thirty-five mile an hour zone is actually where we increase the capacity of the roadway, because while people might be going slower, they can also drive closer together, and you can put more cars through, so that's actually a, a bonus as we look out twenty years, so, I would like to see some of those elements, and to understand for these roundabouts, which ones are roundabouts because they're managing an intersection, and which ones are just the elements to slow people down. And again, I think that's where, you know, it isn't a one-size-fits-all, right? Some roundabouts maybe do need to be bigger, because it's managing an intersection, like twenty-eighth, versus we're just trying to have that, that control, and I do think, you know, not having left turns, like, pretty much the entire state of New Jersey does that, I know it sounds radical, I know I bring it up all the time, but it's really a whole lot safer, and it will actually increase the flow, right? If people aren't making left turns, it's safer for cars, it's safer for pedestrians, and traffic will actually move faster, so I really think we need to consider that. And also, you know, on the north end, in option C, we replace, it looks like we replaced some of the stoplights with roundabouts, is, is that wholly necessary, right? So as we look at this, and look at the different options, I, I think we need to be really sort of specific to that particular place and pick the best thing, and, and again, that kind of gets back to what are we trying to accomplish? Is this, is this here because we just went with all roundabouts, or is that there because we don't have other traffic calming mechanisms? Because if in B we have other traffic calming mechanisms, couldn't we combine those, especially if, you know, you're saying that these roundabouts cost so much? I think there's a, a better combo there, but I like the idea of no left turns, I think it just, it saves on a lot of different things, and, you know, if you come back and tell me it's crazy, that's fine, but as I understand it, as long as these roundabouts are, and intersections are close enough, that that's not an unreasonable thing to do, so, it might also help getting out of neighborhoods, too, so, again, as we look at our intersection level of service, it could significantly improve that.
Thank you. Are we there? Oh? Anybo-
Mayor, if I may, I'm gonna attempt to answer your question you asked a couple minutes ago about, do we feel like we have what we need? I think the answer is not yet, but if I, if I may, Council, what I'm hearing is that option A is probably not gonna cut it, and that we have a little bit more work to do for some version of B plus other options and alternatives, like we've just heard from some of the councilmembers, and with some follow-up information for Council, and to be able to come back and have, present that information, have the discussion about the, what we're aiming to achieve versus, and then what are the options that go with that, and then what are the costs that go with those options, so that we can get to that point of really understanding, marrying up the, sort of those three elements? If that makes sense for Council, I think we would propose, we, let's not pick a date certain, but we would propose to gather those pieces and then pick a time to come back and, and try to get to that actual recommended preferred alternative after having that conversation, if that makes sense to everybody. And team, if I've missed the mark, please jump in, but that's what I was hearing.
That sounds great, and this was a very helpful conversation, the feedback was, is very much appreciated, and so I, I've heard we, you know, we need a B-plus option, so we'll come back with a few B-plus options, but we really appreciate the feedback this evening.
Well, great, or do we wanna sit, sit here, or are we gonna go back to the dais, or what are we doing?
I think we're here, we might as well stay here.
Okay, everybody stand up. Okay, move around, pretend that you have blood flow.
At the park in Tarnasian, yes, I did survive up the hill back.
Okay, I know I feel better.
My goal always was to be like, like, strong and to, like, that. Problem is Pam has seen me riding to Bellevue, and she just sees all bikers running really, really slowly.
Okay, but I had a knee, but, so it wasn't really fair. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I probably, thank you. I haven't seen any of us in years in our plan.
Are you sure? Maybe I have a little. I just, I don't wanna pay for it. It's a make, I don't wanna pay for it.
The thing is, we paint these night bushes.
And we have to park it, which means we have to- We now have a discussion, Public Works Standards and Right-Away Code update, Audrey Sarsay, Ann Lee Wu, and Xavier Van Nellie. I think she should change her name.
She's just stepped out for a moment, so I think we can, team, if we're ready to start, I think you can go ahead and jump in, unless there's something that, separate that Audrey was gonna say.
For the record, I'm Audrey Sarsay.
For the record, I'm Greg Stometio, and I'm not Audrey Sarsay, so, Deputy Director of Public Works here, very excited to come with this great team and give you guys an update on what planned work is for the Public Works Standards in the upcoming year and our right-of-way code updates, so I'm turning it over to Lee Wu, our city engineer, first.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity for us to give you an introduction of this project, so the second slide, okay, so, yeah, we're here to give you an introduction, we'll come back, we'll come back many times throughout this year, and then the next slide. So these, the updates to, the next slide. Oh, where is, oh, sorry. So the, the updates to the right-of-way code and public works standards are two of the work plan items for twenty-twenty-five, we are doing them at once, and hopefully, our brief presentation will help you understand why, that, that would be helpful. So first, a little bit introduction on the right-of-way code, next slide, please. The right-of-way code is part of Simamish Development Code, it's chapter twenty-one point eight, Public Works and Buildings, it has four main subsections, concurrency, impact fees, a system right-of-way permits, and procedures for development projects to request deviation and adjustments. The public, the right-of-way code authorize, the, 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 the right-of-way code authorizes the creation of public works standards, the last time we updated the standards was twenty-sixteen, ten years ago, and this, the standards includes permitting processes, comprehensive requirements for designing, building, streets, stormwater management systems, and inspection processes. It applies to both capital projects and private development projects. In addition to the citywide standards, there's also a standalone twenty-twenty interim standards for town center, next slide, please. The code and standards are very much tied to the comprehensive plan, so the comprehensive plan establishes the vision and goals for the community, that is, the desired future. The code implements that vision and goals through setting up a legal framework, that is, rules and regulations for various topics. Standards includes detailed technical requirements and processes for complying to rules and regulations in the code. So in summary, comprehensive plan, vision and goals are the what a community wants. Code is how to achieve that vision, standards are exactly how to comply with rules and regulations in the code. Next slide, please. A common framework of public works code and standards is that the code would have rules and regulations about how to design, construct, maintain, and finance public infrastructure. To, to further support the code, then there are like detailed technical requirements, procedures contained in various documents such as public works standards. The next slide, please. So generally speaking, um, general, it's very important for code and standards to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, because that's how we get there. Specifically, updates to the right-of-way and the public work standards are so fundamental to progress in our community's vision and goals, because they concern the two most important infrastructure, the right-of-way and stormwater management systems. The right-of-way is the largest asset a community has, and the largest source of liability. Stormwater management systems are essential to protecting waters' bodies, doing things right for both of them is key to protecting safety within our community. The updates would also enable us to align with new technology, current legislation, and best practices. Most important of all, the updates will help us improve customer services, for example, improving consistency and review timelines for private development projects, which we have plenty. For example, last year, the development review team, three engineers and one inspector, issued more than three hundred of right-of-way use permits, almost one every day, they also performed eight hundred permit reviews. So, we have identified some challenges just among the staff team, but of course, we look forward to working with all the stakeholders to expand our understanding of what needs to be done, and we look forward to turn those challenges into opportunities for improvement, so, so, you know, our public work standards are very outdated, there's no intentional alignment between the code and standards and the city policies, such as the comprehensive plan. One challenge is that there's a lack of direction in very important topics, such as, how do we deal with streets and stormwater management systems in some unique neighborhoods? How, what's our consistent approach in managing utilities in our right-of-way? What's, what's the clear guidance on pedestrian connectivity, and so on and so forth? And, and we also have multiple guiding documents that inherently introduce conflicts and, and things like that, so there, there's also conflicting language in the public work standards itself. So, I'll turn it to Jen, to, keep going.
Okay, good evening, so again, my name is Jennifer Van Nellie, as Greg introduced me, so in order to prepare for bringing a consultant onboard, our team has begun identifying gaps in our existing documents. So as part of this, we conducted a preliminary workshop in April with Parks and Public Works staff, just to gather an understanding of where staff see gaps to help inform our scope. So, the list of topics on screen reflect some of the key areas we've identified, and we will be performing additional engagement, both internally and externally, for this project, and we look forward to gathering just more feedback from the community. Next slide. So, for the actual project, and you can go to the next one, thank you, so we wanna capitalize on the opportunity, we- So we want to capitalize on the opportunity we have right now with this update, and we want to accomplish a lot. So by updating our code and standards, we can achieve alignment with current city plans, legislation, incorporate consistency, clear authority responsibilities for all of our right-of-way assets. We also do need to update our code and standards to follow industry best practice. By achieving these goals, we can just improve the entire community's experience working in and with our cities right-of-way. Next slide, please. So how are we going to pull this off? So while our team is in the initial stages of this project, we are planning to collaborate with a multidisciplinary city team because this project will touch almost all the departments in the city at some point. So as part of our approach, we will be conducting more community engagement, including internal and external stakeholder communications. And we will be returning at a later date, multiple later dates actually, for guidance from you all on policy decisions. And then I also want to emphasize that this is going to be a major undertaking for our department. Our public work standards haven't been updated in 10 years. And so for context, the City of Shoreline updates its comparable manual annually. And even then, each of their updates takes their, takes about nine months with a full in-house team. So just given the scale of this update, we will be relying on a consultant, but this will still be a significant lift for the Public Works Department. Next slide, please. So this is the current timeline for our update. It's pretty ambitious, but our goal is to return to you in Q3 of 20, or Q3 of this year with a approval for a consultant contract. And then we're hoping early 2026 to have a draft available for review. Next slide. That's it.
Councilmember Stewart.
My question's really random. I don't remember seeing, did we do a right-of-way tree study? I need to get a copy of that. I don't remember that. I'm sorry.
Ironically, we presented on it right after the last study session with council about Sahali.
Oh, that's one. I wasn't here. I'm sorry. Well, I want to go read that because I'm very interested, like, how do we select what we put in the right-of-way? How do we maintain it, especially with the changing climate? And like, how do you make sure that they don't become the big trees that then mess up your sidewalks and all that kind of stuff? So I will go look that up. Thank you.
It's a great study, and this, that was a foundation for what we knew was a very big code and standards update. So we'll incorporate all of that into this work as well.
And then just generally, I think this is great. And yeah, I was going to say, I've been on council a long time, and we've never looked at these policies, so I'm sure they need some updating. Appreciate the work.
So thank you for doing this. So if Shoreline has done it, they do it every year, and we're 10 years, like, what is the average?
So, so some other jurisdictions update their standards annually, Bellevue, Redmond, and some other cities update theirs every other year, like Seattle. So, so 10 years is not the average.
Okay. So in the future, do we aspire to do it every other year?
With each budget cycle. We would love to dedicate some time. Things change over time. We learn what is working for both our engineering teams, our crews, developers, but this is such a critical update, and we need to, we, we can, our code does allow us administratively update our standards. We would love to be in that kind of a routine with a little bit of engagement, but we can do it administratively. This is a really an overhaul of the whole thing. So the engagement piece will be critically important, so we look forward to that.
Great. Thank you.
My question has to do with, would this, would this update help entities like Zipley, for example, do a better job?
Yes. So, so one of the gaps in our code and standards is having a consistent approach in managing utilities, especially considering like, you know, we have telecommunications companies coming, they want to be in Samamish. Samamish is a high-end market for them. So we are actually working on draft franchise agreement with EZ Fiber that we are hoping to send to council very soon.
Do you guys actually get involved in making decisions about whether there's an opportunity for franchisees to, I mean, do they come to you to franchise, the potential franchisee person come to you? And then do we have, do we have any regulation around how many we would work with?
Great question. They usually do start with public works in most entities. Of course, we solicit feedback from the entire city. It does impact everyone. So we are currently reviewing that application citywide with the leadership team currently. But the first review happens with public works and legal, to take a look at that language. We do have a template that was prepared for us earlier this year, so it's a great, makes the, the application process a little bit easier. Usually before we're even reviewing a draft franchise application, we're, we're meeting with the applicant, just like any other, well, very different, but similar to a permit review application in terms of what is their goal, what's their plan, how, what will outreach with the community look like, those types of things, before we're even really putting eyes on, on paper in terms of looking at their entire draft application for a franchise.
And code, so things like remediation will be done in their contract? It wouldn't be something that you would have any purview?
It's, regulating the right-of-way can happen in two, two components. The franchise, in, in one way, is kind of like an operating agreement. It does provide a little bit more teeth to the, the agreement. The franchise area is the public rights of way. So that's a critical piece to, to make sure that we can understand. Even if an entity has a franchise, they're required to submit a right-of-way permit. And actually, most franchises require submission of a right-of-way permit application even if they're doing emergency work. So if it's critical work, it's usually a phone, quick email, phone conversation, and the repair needs to happen, but they're required within a certain timeframe to submit their, their work so that we have that documented and what they, what they did in the right-of-way.
Great. Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Lamde, do you have another question? Because I've been missing people, so I want to make sure I catch everybody this time. Okay, if not, thank you for this. And now we're going to move on to Transportation and Surface Water Capital Improvement Plan, SIP, update. Audrey.
Sorry, we're just pulling the presentation up. As our team is, is pulling up the presentation, this is, this update is meant to provide an update to council on some recommended things that we're looking at in terms of how we're planning for capital going forward, as well as providing a quick look at where we are with the six-month mark in 2025. The year's flown by. We want to make sure that we're bringing our projects back to council, letting you know where we are with all the current construction and design projects. Thank you. I believe I just introduced it. Next slide. Great. This is a relatively short presentation. We will be back in the fall with a much more detailed presentation, like I said, on our capital plans, but wanted to provide a quick status update this evening. You've seen this many times. Oh, sorry. Is that better? Okay. You've seen this many times. This is traditionally how we have planned for our public works improvements projects. So typically, our city vision and goals are a tremendous influence on how we build our infrastructure. Many of our projects also start from community requests through, through my Samamish and other, other pieces. Of course, things like our corridor studies and plans will inform smaller projects or large projects, but in a phasing approach that we can add to our six-year list, et cetera. And our stormwater basin plans can also add to that six-year list. Our transportation master plan and our comprehensive surface water plan very much inform the direction for our six-year list. They're often referred to as our constrained lists, our unconstrained lists, which is something that we'll, we will get to in seven-plus years live in our comprehensive documents. And then, of course, all those are combined with our citywide CIP, which becomes part of our budget document. This was a fantastic addition to how we plan comprehensively as a city for our capital improvements. We now have one really great place to look at for all of our priorities across the city, not only including transportation and stormwater, but also facilities or facilities that we own and operate, as well as parks. So just as a quick preview, this is our, our transportation programs. We, we spoke a little bit about one of these at the Sahali presentation, but we've quite a few programs, and we won't go through each one. We just wanted to highlight for council where we are with some of our major programs. Our sidewalk program is in progress. You'll see some changes to that later this year as we're refining our project list from our bike and pedestrian mobility plan. That'll greatly inform the project list of that program going forward. So you'll see a change as you see these plans come back to you in September. Our street, oh, could you go back? Sorry. Our streetlight enhancement program and our school zone safety program are both on schedule. We, you can expect to see some changes to the school zone improvement plan, again, when we come back in September with those. The bike and mobility plan will inform some changes in some projects within that program. So excited to expand that program in the future and refine what that can include. Did want to spend a moment, we have some delays on some of our projects, mostly due to staffing. We've had about a 20% vacancy rate, including managers and engineers that are critical to deliver capital projects. It's been really hard. If anyone's watching, please apply. So we do have some projects that will be significantly late, delayed, just because even with consultant support and amazing consultants, we just don't have the bandwidth. So one of those is our intelligent transportation system program, as well as our transit enhancement program. We have a senior transportation planner that is amazing. He just started in April, so he'll be helping with our mobility hub, designing different things with, with that program, but it did have a delay. Most of our transportation projects have actually stayed on schedule, so many kudos to our small but mighty team that we have right now. You heard from Jed, of course, about Sahali. Our flood mitigation project at the top on Issaquah Falls City Road is in, on track to complete 30% design. You will see some changes to that project with staff recommendations later this year. You'll see some other projects coming up in our six-year plan that need to take priority to complete design for that. So those funds originally allocated to complete design for that project, staff will be recommending to reallocate those to some other high priority projects that really we need to focus on, some, some other rehabilitation of our infrastructure. Louis Thompson, if you haven't driven by lately, we're happy to, to take you on a tour. It's amazing. It's on schedule. It's going great. Knock on wood. And then our flood mitigation project on 212th is on schedule. We did complete our alternatives analysis for that project. We did set aside some funding this year that we likely will not be utilizing. We want to wait and continue to monitor that project a little bit more. Those were some, some gabions, the wire baskets full of rocks that support the sidewalk on the side of the road. They're sinking, but we need to understand the rate in which it's sinking before we kind of proceed with some, some other projects in the future for that, that correction for that road. Sixth Street, we provided, of course, our presentation last week to council that project's on schedule. And finally, East Lake Samamish Parkway, that road stabilization project is a priority project for the city. Unfortunately, it is delayed. We haven't had, we have not been successful with consultants submitting SOQs or Statement of Qualifications when it's been advertised, it's been advertised twice. So we are reevaluating how to move that project forward at this time. Then I'm going to turn it over to Greg.
So the surface water storm, CIPs have similar challenges to the, to the rest of our, our programs. With staffing, we've had to reprioritize and relook at how we complete our work and, and make sure we can complete the work at the highest level of priority. So within our programs, our 100-levels projects, our small drainage projects, we have historically done these with a combination of in-house with our crews doing them and contractors. So we've, that's progressing as planned. Our crews have picked up a little bit additional work with that than we were originally planning to, to manage with contractors because we don't have, have engineers and project managers to do so. So we are still completing the work per plan. The 200-level series is pipe rehabilitation. A lot of it is TVing and camera assessment surveys. You recall, we, we let a contract, and you see those trucks throughout the city. We've delayed the construction on this program specifically. We're finding less damage with the survey, but the higher component of the delay to next year is we, you may recall, we brought you a pavement management consultant survey. So we want to complete the pavement management consultant survey and make sure we know which roads we should do, and we're doing them correctly the first time. So we want to combine those two, and the information in both of those two, and do the projects correctly once. So you'll see a lot more construction with this 200-level series next year.
Just really quick, Greg. One thing that we have added, it's a great segue between these two programs, is we, we camera the pipes ahead of, of the overlay, so that ideally, there's usually a five, five-year moratorium on a road, so that you're not allowed to cut the road open. If you do, you're replacing it. So we don't want to have to do that, of course. So we're cameraing our storm, stormwater pipes ahead of the overlay so that we can hopefully catch any failures with the pipes to avoid any issues with the roads.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. So Beaver Lake is the road that we're going to be soon doing grinding overlay, just on the other side of the, of the park around the lake. And we did TV those lines earlier this year to confirm that scope. Our storm retrofits modernizes and brings our drainage facilities up to new standards. We've, are in design on two of those at present. We are looking at potentially delaying at least one and potentially both, but probably just one of those projects due to workload constraints, and then also the project cost for those specific, the 300-level series has come a little bit higher. So we are reevaluating the, the project pri, criterias and making sure that we are meeting the needs of the city. The 400-level series is a larger scale of, of the 100 and the 300, where it's maintaining the existing ponds at, at the level they were currently, originally designed towards. And we have delayed some of that, similar to the 100 series, that we're, we're going out to contract and doing a lot of that more in-house with our crews. Our priority stormwater projects, of course, as you may recall, is George Davis, improving a culvert passage down to the lake that is almost completed with design. We're supposed to be getting the 90% design in the next two weeks. For the rest of the year, we'll be finishing design, completing land acquisition requirements, and then taking that out to bid late this year, early next, so that we can meet the, the Fish Passage window next season. So very excited with that, that that project has finally come to fruition and is really, it's on the fast path at present. Hazel Wolf is a culvert improvement, bringing water down from Hazel Wolf, not pond, through, through a culvert down to Beaver Lake. That project is on schedule. That is one of the ones that we are evaluating at present to potentially delay. We may complete design and then let it sit on the shelf, but because of staffing resources, we're looking at potentially delaying Hazel Wolf Culvert. The last project that we're going to highlight today is Loria Estates. It's an outfall diversion that has high storm flow that's eroding a hillway on the backside of a property that we have access rights to. So we're looking at redesigning that, taking it to a new location within that outfall, and it is on design schedule. So progressing the, the larger projects through the design phase well. I'm turning it back to Audrey.
Thank you, Greg. As we mentioned, we're very excited to move forward with our citywide CIP. Going forward, this will serve as the six-year Transportation Improvement Plan, or TIP, and the six-year Stormwater Improvement Plan, or SWIP. We are combining those informational guides to accompany the city IP, gosh, sorry, citywide CIP. We can expect to see some changes based on staff recommendations. I mentioned there's a handful of new projects. We will likely be adding a category in the, the six-year transportation plan this year that is strictly focusing on rehabilitating, aging, or failing infrastructure. We have several projects. Unfortunately, we're all watching those and monitoring those right now. One of them is Southeast 24th Street Boardwalk. As I mentioned previously, we'll also be incorporating some of the, the great work that we're working on with our bike and pedestrian mobility plan and pavement plan into those. Our, our basin plan is set to be adopted in the next few weeks, so we'll incorporate that project list into the, the stormwater six-year plan. So we are finalizing our plans. This is a citywide effort. We're working with finance right now. We are hoping to get all of these updated plans on the web, webpage in late summer, and we'll bring those back to you.
and we'll bring those back to you with lots of details in September. Any questions about our current projects, or where they're at, or the planning process going forward?
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, is the deadline to submit our TIP, is that the end of the year? I've had July in my head.
It is July 1st. You're correct. It will just be seven months early going forward.
Well, don't we have to submit one every year?
Yes, councilmember. Well, so yes and no. If we want to be eligible for grants and projects through WashDOD, then yes, you have to submit it. We are pivoting to having the TIP and SWIP, or in this case, the TIP, be the citywide CIP, because that's the actual adopted council plan that supersedes the prior TIP. So what you adopted last year in June, we actually changed a little bit when we got to the budget. So that's now the operating. So that, we are submitting the CIP that you all adopted last fall that was for this year as our TIP. So we are meeting the requirement. We're just, as Audrey said, we're seven months early. But we feel that more closely lines up with how we do all of our work, and it directly lines up with final council action on what is actually adopted in the CIP as part of the budget process.
That'll also really very much help with procurement as well. We often have this great plan in June and are kind of waiting to make sure all the dollars are allocated in the budget. So this is great to have it happen all at once.
Excellent. And then I had a question, which might actually be more pertinent to your last presentation, but I just thought of it was, as part of, you know, as we look at these things, I thought of it when you were talking about sort of coordinating, you know, stormwater with, you know, the repavement, which just makes sense. But, and I kind of thought of this coming up Thompson Hill Road, actually, the other day. Do we have a plan, or maybe this is part of our code that we'll look at, that when we do certain projects, we consider burying the power lines? I know that going around the city and doing that would be infinitely expensive, but like on Thompson Hill Road, like it just occurred to me as I was driving up since we had the bomb cyclone, oh, maybe it would have been a good idea for us to have considered that on that roadway, just because there are so many trees, and it was, that one was kind of a nightmare. So is that part of what you guys will look at with your codes?
We can review it. The standards, I believe there is a section that does address it. It is very expensive. We did consider for Louis Thompson. I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but I want to say it was approaching a million dollars. It was a lot.
Right. But didn't we kind of spend a whole boatload having to replace all those poles that got knocked down in the bomb cyclone? Like the brand-new ones, like some of them snapped?
We don't replace them. Peterson Energy replaces them at their cost.
Okay.
And there's different costs on those as well. The distribution poles at the lower gains is a different cost than the higher higher voltages are 115 or 230 KB. The transmission line costs are 10 times the cost of a distribution line undergrounding as well. So there's variables within undergrounding power.
Does PSC help us pay for any of that? Because I would imagine the maintenance underground is a lot less expensive.
No.
No? Okay, thanks.
Anyone else, council? Because I had a question. It had to do with East Lake Samamish Parkway. I just wanted to understand, were you saying that on that one, you can't get anybody to bid on it? Is there something unique about the criteria for the qualifications?
No, I'm not sure why folks haven't been interested in it. Part of what we try to do is meet with consultants anytime we're at a conference or any networking event. We're always bragging and excited about all the great work and projects that we have at the city, trying to help build up a network of teams that we can work with for this particular project. We just haven't had any consultants that have submitted on the project for design phase.
So we originally went out, out to the street is the phrase we call it, out for solicitation. Out in January, no bids were received. We reached out to our partners in the industry and anyone else that's already on our bidders list, and just wanted to make sure, hey, did you see this? Did this come to you and confirm that it didn't go to some spam? And then just let them know that, hey, per our contracting requirements, it's going to go back out, and here's the date that it's going to go out. And as we mentioned, we received no bids even after that. So at present, we're looking at procurement methodology where we have on-call contracts. They are expiring at the end of the year, and we are negotiating a scope and fee with one of our on-calls to perform that work. But it's not ideal to use on-calls for specific bodies of work. And this is a specific project. Typically, specific projects, you take those out and allow the bidding environment to come in and show how the market plays out with it.
But other, you've been able to get other bids, is that correct?
Actually, only just a handful. So Sixth Street, I believe, we received two statements of qualifications, so it's been challenging.
After, Six was the same situation. We went out the exact same timeline. January, no one bid on Six. We reached out to people, and Two came the second time. So we've had challenges this quarter with half bidding.
I appreciate, okay, thank you. Thank you for that background and that context. That does help. I know that you're concerned about it, and that you'd probably love to know what the problem is. If there's a reputational problem that makes it so that contractors don't want to work with the city, or if there's some other thing that you could attribute. But it probably is very hard to suss out unless you have friends in the industry that are prepared to tell you.
It seems like it's more on the consultant side. So we've had our construction bids this year, and you recall.
So just the consultants?
Yeah, so we received, the ADA project received five bids. The pavement project, we're grinding overlay, there's not a lot of pavement companies in this region, so it's pretty standard to get one or two. As I mentioned, I think in our last presentation for those construction bids, they all came in within or under the engineer estimate. So we're getting bids. Our team is doing a good job estimating, and they're coming in per the market for the construction component of these projects. But the design component of a project, which is equally as important, that's where we're having those challenges.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I know that you're investigating and trying to figure that out as well. So if there's no other questions, then we can actually move on to new business.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. So for new business, we have a discussion, Contract with Freedom Entertainment LLC for fireworks display at the Fourth on the Plateau. We have to do this because I explained to children at Blackwell today that we were going to have a Fourth on the Plateau. They know where I live. We need to work this out. So is Anjali here? Oh, Anjali's right next to me. Okay, and Emily Scott?
Emily is also joining me online, and I can get started. This should be quick. Good evening, council. For the record, I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks and Recreation, and joining me online is Emily Scott, our Recreation and Cultural Services Manager. And we have for your consideration tonight a contract with Freedom Entertainment LLC in an amount of not to exceed $50,000 to launch a fireworks display at the Fourth on the Plateau event. And as council knows, that is the biggest event that the city puts on, and we have a draw of about 12,000 to 15,000 people. We've lined up music, food trucks, and all of, you know, the great activities culminates in a big fireworks show. And over the years, the cost of these fireworks has gone up, and the city was working with a vendor, and unfortunately, they chose to pull out. And so at short notice, Emily has actually been able to find another vendor for us, and we are working as fast as we can with the city attorney to review the contract and make sure they have the right insurance coverage and indemnifications. So what you have in your council packet is a draft contract. And what we are asking from council tonight is to approve it, and the attorney says we have to approve it substantially as to form, so that the city manager can actually sign the final version when they have it. So that is all I have. Happy to answer any questions, and I do have a modified motion that includes that if you would like to.
Councilmember Guta.
Do we know why the previous vendor chose to rescind the contract?
Yeah, but there's been a few reasons. So, you know, basically, we have a limited number of licensed pyrotechnicians in Washington State, and there is a huge demand for the Fourth of July. And post-pandemic, the trends have been for bigger national companies to come in and acquire some of these smaller companies. So then the city is left with working with attorneys from out of state, and these bigger companies require the city to use their template and not the city. So just that whole process takes longer. And additionally, the city is using a new contracting software platform, and that has had some logistical issues. But rather than just come to us and tell us the challenges that they were facing, they chose to pull out.
Councilmember Lamb.
So I appreciate seeing that in the agenda bill that there's a sponsor for, is it for this event or just city events? I wasn't clear on that.
They are a sponsor for all our summer events.
Oh, okay.
And this is more than we've ever brought in the past years. We typically manage somewhere between 1,000 and 2,000.
Okay.
I also gave a shout out to Emily for that. She rethought the whole thing, because it's a lot of work for staff to work with folks for, you know, and they come to us last minute with a $500, a $1,000, and then we have to make sure that their name is included in all the flyers and all the social media, and then coordinate them putting up booths. And so this year, we just tried something different. We increased the amount, and they are residents of Samamish. Yeah.
So thank you, Emily, and the sponsor is People Come First Construction Group, so shout out to them.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to make a motion?
A move that we authorize a city manager into a contract with Freedom Entertainment LLC to launch a fireworks display at the Fourth of July Plateau event. And what was the additional part?
Approved substantially as to form.
What she just said. Approved substantially to form.
Is there a second?
Second?
It's been first and seconded. Do you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, we're going to have a great time on the Fourth. Bang, bang.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Okay, we are going to finish before 10. Counsel reports, city manager report. City manager, do you want to go first?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be brief. Just a reminder, tomorrow night is an open house for our town center work. It is in concert going on at the same time as the farmer's market, so it should be easy to swing in and engage with the folks if you want to come chat and give us thoughts around the work that's going on in town center. I also want to remind that for those that are interested and want to come join us, we are having a meeting with the Inglewood community on Thursday night here also in chambers in City Hall, and would encourage anyone who's interested to come out for that as well. And then finally, it is Flag Day this weekend. So just FYI that for a temporary, we'll be lowering the pride flag and putting up the veterans' flag for the weekend. Friday, it will come, we will swap them back on Monday morning, but just want to acknowledge that that is going on, and we also always support our veterans. And then next week is, we are closed on Thursday, June 19th in honor of Juneteenth, and just want to acknowledge that as well. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart, did you want to bring up the letter? You don't have to, but would you like to? Oh, well, I can just kick it off.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I can. So there's a couple that are residents of Samamish who are immigrants, who were here under one, I guess, immigration policy, and they're now applying for asylum. They were in court on June 4, and the judge gave them 10 days to respond to some questions in writing. And when they left the courtroom, they were apprehended, pushed up against the back of an elevator, handcuffed, and detained. We would like to send a letter in support of our residents, that they are here legally, they have not broken any laws, and that there was no, you know, no reason for them to be detained until such time as a court were to dismiss their case. And as their representatives, we think it's only appropriate that we support our residents.
So what I'm looking for here are basically head nods if you're okay with us creating a letter that's in support of this couple, these presidents. If that's generally okay, then we'll proceed. It may show up on consent. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, so I have a Kokoni ILA management meeting tomorrow at 2:30, and I think, well, Allison presented this council with the plan, with the whole thing, and then the group will eventually make an approval of, and then we'll come back to councils throughout the, you know, different cities for approval as far as the money goes. And then Friday, East Side Transportation, we have that meeting on Friday as well. Thanks.
I have a Public Issues Committee meeting tomorrow. I apologize for the late send on the agenda packet. I just got it yesterday, but I sent that out earlier today with some notes. Also, the ETP meeting on Friday is in person at Redmond.
I have a Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting on Friday. The main topic is PFAS in our landfills.
We have an EFER meeting on Thursday, and I think the, really, the main thrust of the meeting, or the only item we might be voting on, will be a profile, candidate profile for the new chief.
Actually, I think we may be voting on a new head of the EFER, given that, didn't Zach get a new job?
He is not resigning, because they're not in session. He's not resigning from his council position.
Okay, I'm actually really happy about that.
Zach Hall, yeah. He was appointed to the state legislature following Representative Hunt being appointed as the senator, so.
And I have an emergency management meeting on Wednesday, which will take up a big chunk of the day. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn? It's a special meeting.
It is a special meeting. I move to adjourn. It is a special meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're done.